Okay, I see all the council here. I see all of you out there. Staffs here, ready to get going. So, call to order, the August 27th, 2012, meeting of the San Carlos City Council and successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. If you would all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members or staff, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
No changes, okay. Not hearing any from the council, so we'll carry on the way we've got it. Item three is reports from closed session, and we usually do that through the city attorney if there's anything to report.
Mr. Mayor, there's no reportable actions from the special meeting immediately before this meeting.
Thank you. And next is council communications and announcements, and we've been on vacation for a good part of August, sort of, so maybe we've got some good stories to tell or something. We'll start over here with Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had just said two things I wanted to mention. One is I was at a congestion management and environmental quality committee meeting today for the city council, city-county association of governments, and one of the topics that came up, they were talking about pollution discharge into the bay, and I was fascinated to learn that a source of pollution for the bay actually has to do with brake pads on cars and the copper in them. You know, when you break your car, step on the brakes, there's an abrasion process, that's what slows your car down, and it's actually been identified as a source of pollutants into the bay. And I mention that not because it's something we need to specifically address, but just that it was a reminder to me that there are awful lot of dimensions of life that you don't tend to think of as having pollution footprints that do. The other thing I was going to mention is, because I'm going to be dropping my daughter off at college in Scotland next week, I think she's trying to get as far away from her mother and I as she can, I'm going to miss the next council meeting, and I apologize for that, but duty calls.
Thank you. And that's the next council meeting that's up here and not the council retreat?
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you. All right, let's swing on down here to Ms. Clapper.
Okay, great. In the course of taking on some assignments with the council, one of them is the San Mateo County Library, JPA, and they canceled their August meeting. I guess they heard I'd been assigned, but in lieu of that, I had an excellent orientation meeting with several of the folks from the San Mateo County Library, giving me information to prepare for the next governing board meeting. So that was excellent. And along the same lines, I met with the San Carlos Green Organization and got some good information about their various projects that they've done in the past, their interests and ideas for San Carlos in the future. So that was excellent. And I was very happy to attend the Adult Community Center 30th Anniversary Lunch and present the proclamation to the group, and it was a fun event to get to attend. And something that's coming up that I've heard about, and I'm not sure how, as a community, we're encouraging people to participate, but there's going to be a new CERT training class starting in mid-October, being the Community Emergency Response Team. That might be something that we would like to see more folks in San Carlos get involved in. So those are some of the things that I've been doing in the last month.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Just a few. Along with council member Clapper, I also attended the Adult Community Center luncheon, which was a very enjoyable event. And also the Symphony at Sunset, which I've really come to enjoy. That's just a splendid event that the city puts on every year, and it was kind of nice to ask to be asked to say a few words, which I did. I wasn't the host or the emcee, which is fine with me, but it was a very good event. And the last thing, attended the Two Plus Two Committee along with council member Clapper last week, and there are some nice bits of synergy that are coming out of that in terms of providing some services, much-needed services for the schools that the city's going to provide. So I think that's a great committee, and it's a nice agreement that we have with the school district that comes up with a lot of great ideas. That's it.
Okay, Vice Mayor Grisilli.
Although we were off for about six weeks, as the other council members mentioned, we're on other committees and other boards. We had a sewer board meeting in the interim, and a tour, and the new building is, the new plant is coming along. It's going to, it has a long life. It'll be going on, I think, until 2017 before it's finally finished, but it is proceeding on time, and so far, I think, we're on budget, too, which is most important. The other item is City and County Association of Governments, of which I'm the representative, and we had a meeting, and our executive director will be retiring in October, so we will have to replace that individual. The City and County Association of Governments is a monthly meeting of all 20 cities and city, or in the county of San Mateo, which is a terrific regional group, which gets, works with, as Mark, council member Ober, said, congestion management, as well as transportation money, and a lot of things that have gotten done in this county, is because the county leaders, by almost forced being come to this meeting, get together and hash out the problems and work it out. And the other counties in this area, nine Bay Area counties, look at us with great envy, how we can get things done. So basically, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I have a number of items here I wanted to share. First is to thank Mr. Collins and Ms. Clapper for going to the ACC. I was supposed to go also and read the proclamation, and I said yes to the event, and then realized when I was on my vacation that I had done so, and I wasn't there. So I apologize to the folks of the ACC. And Mark was there, too. So we were well represented. I just wasn't there. You could say better represented.
Mr. Mayor, we took the privilege of eating your dessert for you.
Oh, thank you, okay, good, very good. The other thing I wanted to mention is, kind of on the lighter side, is we used to have six people up here, and it's not that we lost a council member or anything like that, but Ms. Boland, our city clerk, is now down over here and not up here, because we need the room. We've got so much stuff that we need the room up here. So Ms. Boland, our city clerk, you'll find her over there. So just wanted to point that out. I wanted to announce that we did have, we had a special meeting before this one, most of it was closed session, but we also interviewed for the Alts, excuse me, the Arts and Culture Commission. And after some deliberation and talking amongst the council after our interview, we've appointed Stephen Kane to be the next member of the Arts and Culture Commission. Also wanted to mention that I went to an oversight board meeting. This is the meeting that is taking care of things because of the breakup of the RDA and the state law taking away the RDA's redevelopment agencies. Sorry, we use a lot of, what are those, acronyms?
Acronyms.
Acronyms up here. Shouldn't always do that. And I just wanted to, for the good of the community and also for the good of the council, I took one of the ideas that came to my mind when we interviewed to replace Mr. Klein, and Ms. Clapper talked about during her interview, the downtown storefronts that were empty, and had the idea of could we get a temporary tenant in there. And I think we were under the impression before that we couldn't because we were stuck with the unknowns of the RDA and so on and so forth. But I brought that up at the oversight board meeting. The attorney, Mr. Malpe, you can straighten me out if I don't get this one right, but the attorney felt like we probably could do some things more than we might be doing now. He's going to look into it and let the board know for sure, but I did raise it with the board. There's a couple of folks who live in San Carlos who are on that board, and they were very interested in that prospect of possibly getting something in those empty storefronts, or at least using the building for something so it has some activity. So I wanted to let the council know that, that that came up, because I know we also talked about it at the council retreat. Again, I want to give Karen credit for bringing up that idea initially. The last thing I wanted to report on is I serve as, or I did serve as Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which is a subcommittee, actually, of what Bob is on, which is CCAG, the County, City-County Associations of Governments. And I have to report to everybody that we did not have the happiest meeting at our last meeting. What we were looking at is the funding and where the money's coming from and how it must be spent. And not to go into a big, long story about this, if council members are interested, or if the public is interested in knowing more about this, I can tell you more about it. But the long and short of it is that with what's called the One Bay Area Plan and the O-BAG, what's called O-BAG funding, this funding is being tied, I'm going to be blunt here from my opinion, is being tied, its hands are being tied. Seventy percent of it is going to have to be used on PDAs, which are priority development areas. And I can just tell you, the B-PAC was not very happy about it. There are a lot of council members, there's, with B-PAC, there's both council members who are appointed to that, and then there are members of the community, countywide, who are sort of at-large appointees. And there are many of us who were not happy with this money being tied up 70% for PDAs, and we don't like what we see MTC doing and A-BAG doing. It's taking away a lot of local control. And there was a lot of discussion about that at that meeting. So if you want to know more about that, I can tell you more about it. And I think I covered everything. So that's it for item four. That brings us to item five, which is council appointments and presentations. And tonight, we have consideration of appointing recommended youth advisory council voting members for the 2012 to 2014 term, and recognition of retiring youth advisory council voting members. And I think Mike Becker is going to take this one.
Hope you guys enjoyed your vacation there. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Mike Becker. I'm the Youth Development Coordinator and the advisor to the Youth Advisory Council. It is my honor and privilege to speak on the behalf of the Youth Advisory Council tonight. This group is some of the best of the best San Carlos has to offer and is filled with our future leaders. This past year, the YIC volunteered countless hours in our community, donated thousands of dollars to good causes, and hosted numerous youth events. I'm sure some of your neighbors, your children, attended Battle of the Bands, Youth Center dances, some of our youth conferences. Lastly, and most importantly, they provide a youth voice to our councils and commissions. We are extremely proud of their work. We are sad to see some of our members move on, but we wish them luck in all their future endeavors. We are also very excited to see the new members come on board and see all that they can accomplish. Thank you.
Can I, do you want to start with the new ones or the retiring? This is the retiring.
Retiring, let's do retiring.
You want to do retiring?
Yeah.
Okay. There's three people that are retiring, three council members that are retiring. Two have already headed off to college, but we have Kevin Harris here today. Kevin's heading to Northwestern, and it starts a little bit later. Kevin was, come on up, Kev, come on up. He attended Sacred Heart Prep, was, Mello, excuse me, Mello, sorry. That's offensive, I'm sorry.
He served two, two-year terms?
Served as the chair and the vice chair.
Right.
And I have a word about Kevin, just a short story. When council was going through its debate, if you will, about how to replace Mayor Klein when he stepped down, Kevin chimed in, had some good things to say, some good food for thought on that, and it just goes to show, as Mr. Becker was saying, these students that get involved in this program, they truly are thinkers and wannabe leaders, and with what Kevin did, he was already, you know, showing some of that in his participation with what we were debating as a council. And I thank you for that. You had some very good input there. So we have a certificate for you right there. It's one on top, and thank you for your service.
The other two couldn't make it, but I can assure, I didn't send them. The other two couldn't make it tonight. Katie Booth, she served as a secretary and served two-year terms as well. In addition, Lauren Vogel, who also served two-year terms, two two-year terms, and was also a secretary. No problem. Lastly, I'm going to call up the new youth advisory council members and have them sworn in, as well as an alternate here, okay? So can I have Kyler Blair Jerome come up from Central Middle School, sixth grader? Come on up. Can I have Matt Baratua? He's a junior at Unipero Sarah High School. He's a junior at Unipero Sarah High School. He's a senior. Jake Kumamoto, Carmont High School freshman. Alex Kumamoto, he attends Carmont High School as well and he's a sophomore. And Claire Porter, who also attends Carmont High School and she's a junior. And I'd also like Joseph Gottlieb to come up. He is a Carmont sophomore, I'm sorry, seventh grader at Central Middle School and eighth grader. And Jack Carlson is a sophomore at Carmont High School as well. Come on up.
They need to vote. I was just going to say. Mr. Mayor, you need to vote on the appointments before I swear them in. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the recommended appointments.
I second the motion.
Okay, that means you all have become members of the Youth Advisory Council. Congratulations. And Christine's going to have you sworn in here, our city clerk.
Thanks very much. I'm going to administer the oath of office for California for you. It's the oath that all of the officials in the state of California take. So, if you can raise your right hand, please. And the answer after we're done is yes, hopefully. Do you solemnly swear that you will bare-tooth faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Yes, yes, or I do. Okay, and then all of you need to sign this over at the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, our next item, while they're putting their signatures down and so forth, is public comment. I do not have any speaker cards, but this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that aren't on our agenda. Is there anybody that came to speak to the council on an item not on the agenda? Excuse me? Oh, Andre. Yeah, he's filling out a card now. Andre Carpio? Mr. Carpio, you've got two minutes. He can't hear me at all. Can you hear us? Yeah, okay. If you'd like to come to the podium and speak, you've got two minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I come to tell my grief about the theft of my solar car, Carp. That has been stolen in 1993 and when I tried to recover it in 1994, the police just gave it away to the thief and the car has disappeared ever since. So, you are responsible. And I'm sure you have received the letter I sent there. I have advised my government, the Belgian government, to take sanction because my solar car involves patents, European patents, and these are property rights of not only mine but the Belgian patent, the European patent. So, you better think about what you are going to do next because the Belgian government assured me that they are going to make sanction and they may cancel the sale of a building in return for my solar car. So, take your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I do not have any other speaker cards, so that'll take us to Item Seven, which is Approval of the Consent Calendar. I do have some items I would like to pull, but council members, any items here that you have a concern about?
I have no items.
No items? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we pull off Item Seven H.
H. Okay. And the items that I had some questions on and so forth are K, L, and O. So, if we could have a motion for the other items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Items 7A through G, I, J, M, N, P, Q, R, and S.
I'll second that. P, Q, through S, okay. So, we have a motion and we have a second. Madam Clerk, I guess we need a vocal.
Councilmember Clapper? Yes. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, now, what we've been doing is taking these items immediately. We're going to go back to the practice, though, of taking these at the end of the meeting. So, that was the original intent and we'll stick to that original intent. Okay, that brings us to Item Eight, which is Reports to Council. And I'm seeing nothing from the city staff. They've enjoyed their vacation. They don't have anything for us. Item Nine is a public hearing and it's to consider adoption of a resolution certifying the initial study and negative declaration for the Burton Park tree removal and replacement in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And I see Doug Long is going to give us a staff report on this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. You may recall, this item has been brought to the council previously and was acted upon to approve removing, or excuse me, replacing 23 trees at Burton Park. I'm going to quickly go through a PowerPoint just to kind of bring you up to date and where we are at with the project. Excuse my speed through this. As I say, this has been vetted one time. This will be kind of a refresher. There's a couple of new items on there, but then I will leave it to council to ask any questions that they need clarification on. Again, they'll notice that the red line demarcates the area in which the trees are located in the park. They are ironbark eucalyptus trees. There are 22 now. There were 23 when we originally reported this, but we'll comment on that in just a few, couple of minutes. A safety inspection by a certified arborist was conducted following one of the branches falling on a basketball court. So, it kind of triggered a review or an assessment of the trees. This assessment identified each tree, starting with number one closest to Britton Avenue and all the way around the corner to number 23. And you can see how they are in relationship to the tennis courts. Kind of a rudimentary figure here, but it gives you some perspective in which ones we're talking about. This is what they look like. This is Cedar, so you can see along the tennis courts from that perspective. This is on Arroyo, looking into the children's playground area. Arroyo and Chestnut, you can see as you go around the corner, there's, you know, kind of highlights one singular tree on 23. There's two, actually two, one at the corner. The trees on Cedar Street have weakly attached sprouts. They just, you know, there's some issues with the trees and on the Arroyo, you'll notice from the pictures and if you recall, they have been topped to provide adequate space for the PG&E lines overhead. We can only speculate about the trees that are on Cedar. Those were topped at one time and topping the trees compromises the tree. It's no longer doing what it wants to do and it tends to want to grow out. This could have occurred 40 years ago, for all we know. But, and we again speculate that this is, they were possibly topped to add additional sunlight into the park. The final of the arborist inspection, they had a variety of things that were going on. This is provided in the report. I'm sure you have reviewed that. And there are a variety of things that were adding to the trees not being in good health or becoming a safety hazard. On January 23rd, authorized the 23 eucalyptus tree removed. We had community meetings and those community meetings, we engaged the community to determine what the replacement trees would be. So, we wanted to get some input particularly from the neighbors and some of the recommendations that we were making and they were happy to provide us with some feedback. We did an initial study as part of SEQA. We issued, I asked, excuse me, initial study and negative declaration on April 4th, but in response to one of the public comments, actually a couple of the public comments, we decided to have a tree risk assessment for public safety and this was by a certified tree risk assessor and a historical and cultural value study done to answer the question whether or not the trees presented a historic faction of the park. As a result of the consultant review, the initial study was modified to reflect the consultant's conclusions and it was recirculated and you can see the timeline that we provided that recirculation. And then on August 10th, as this process was going along, one of the trees, actually the branches on tree number six, fell. This is the damage that was occurred. You may have heard about this or may have in fact seen some of the pictures related to this. It had significant damage to the car. Nobody was hurt, but this was a moving vehicle and you can see it was just a split second away from causing catastrophic damage to people and into the individuals in the car. More pictures of this shows where the branches broke. Incidentally, this, with the initial review, this true, this tree was slated to be pruned, not taken down. This was the recommendation, although staff recommended that we actually eliminate all 23. This is because we were afraid this may happen. We just, we just don't feel confident in these trees at this point in time. If it were pruned, it would have to be pruned significantly to where it would completely lose its integrity. It wouldn't really look much like we would anticipate an ironbark eucalyptus tree to look because of the necessary steps we would have to take to bring it into safety. And then finally, here's, I'm just going to let you glance at some of the trees that we have promoted. We did run these past the community. We did get a buy-in from the community in terms of tree replacement. What we're trying to do is create biodiversity. We don't want to put all the same species in there. If something goes wrong to one, it usually goes wrong with the rest of them. So, we do have a variety of trees. It will offer a variety of fall color. These are deciduous trees. The purpose of deciduous trees is to provide sunlight during the colder months. It should be something that the park users would appreciate. But again, just to take you through what they would look like, you can see there is a variety of color, a variety of canopy and a variety of sizes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. Questions from council? I see one here, Mr. Obert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Long. If we were to go ahead and approve the removal of the trees, some or all of them, whatever, how much of a lag, if any, would there be between the removal of the trees and the planting of the replacement trees?
I will defer to our Park Superintendent, Guy Wallace, if he would join me up here. There's some of the questions will be pertinent to him. It'll be a very short time that we're considering this.
It's going to just be a week or two. We will be putting in an irrigation system, which will take some time, so that they will survive, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question. The pictures that you showed, Mr. Long, of those trees, obviously they're full grown. How much time would it take for those, for the trees to, ballpark, again, I know we're not on a botanist, but how about, possibly, how long does it take to get to the level of those pictures?
Twenty years. The trees we're planting are fast growing, but those trees are.
I understand. I just want to make sure everybody understands that that tree isn't going in tomorrow. So, yeah. How many gallons is the tree that we're putting in, do we know?
Twenty-four inch box.
Twenty-four, and that's a, and that's a 24 across.
Twenty-four inch across. They're about 15, 16 feet tall.
Tall, okay. So, just again, give people an idea of what it's going to be if we decide to do this. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No? I just had a few. The two questions I have, one, I went out there and took another look at the area, the scope of work area, and I took note that there are other trees that are there that are not eucalyptus trees. Those will stay?
Yes, they will.
Okay, very good. Most of those are along Cedar, I think, is what I'm thinking of. And then the species that you showed, I just, might sound like a quirky question, but because I live right downtown and I walk in front of the Samtrans Building all the time, they have a real issue there with the trees they've chosen years ago, I guess, because it has a sticky sap that comes off the leaves and then the leaves drop on the ground. They're a little bit like posty notes all over the place and they get on your dog and so forth. I hope the trees we're choosing, none of those issues.
Tulip trees.
Tulip trees. There's no tulip trees.
Yeah, so usually those trees are susceptible to aphids is usually what drops and stuff like that. We pick these particularly for the reason that they won't create that problem.
Okay, so those are the only two questions I had. All right, thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Stay there.
The additional tree that was identified in the most recent arborist report, the untagged tree, I guess it was a red gum, what are the plans for that tree?
I don't.
The risk assessor recommended removing that tree. He says it wasn't part of his original task, but it's on its way out. It's sick. It's as much danger as any of the other trees.
So, that would be done in addition to the other 23 trees?
We should do them all at one time and have them growing at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thanks. So, this is a public hearing and I've got, I believe, one speaker slip on this issue. So, Karavonk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The reason we're back again this evening is because the city did not follow proper procedures for the removal of the historic heritage trees. And I am sorry that people were put at risk on August 10th, but the city's tree professionals have noted in their reports that the ironbark trees are in their current poor state because they have not been properly maintained. The city's tree risk assessment consultant in his report, which is attached to the negative declaration, has indicated that six of the 14 trees on Cedar Street can be pruned to acceptable levels and are not recommended for removal. These are trees number one, two, three, nine, 12, and 13. In addition, there's also tree number 23 on Chestnut Street. Our own certified tree risk assessor, Mr. Cox, who met with members of staff, has indicated to us that when properly pruned, these trees could last another 20-plus years. I therefore request that these seven trees be retained. And I ask that the initial study be amended to reflect that these trees are heritage trees under the city's ordinance. The city's architectural historian conducted no independent research into Burton Park's historic and cultural landscape. We, that is Ms. Minton and myself, conducted that research and attached 1947 aerial photos obtained from the San Carlos Museum to our written comments. And hopefully you had a chance to look at those. It's apparent from the size of the trees that they were likely planted around 1939 at the time of the physical development of the park, which was a WPA or Works Progress Administration project. The park was dedicated in 1940. There is still a strong WPA link as demonstrated in the existing Adobe Field House, which did contain restrooms but also housed sports equipment, which is why it's called a fieldhouse. We have oral histories from folks who helped clear the baseball fields that generated the Adobe for making the bricks. I object, therefore, to the consultant's statement that there is no longer a WPA I object therefore to the consultant's statement that there is no longer a WPA link. The entire park's original physical development was part of a WPA project. I request that the report be amended to eliminate that comment. Apparently, the city is taking more procedural shortcuts because it would cost the city several thousand dollars to prepare a pop, a proper cultural landscape report instead of the $500 that was paid. A proper cultural landscape report could recommend appropriate replacement trees and other mitigation measures. A negative declaration could be issued if the project met the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic resources. The staff report on page three notes that according to Dr. Jones, the consultant, this project does not meet the Secretary of Interior standards. Okay, I'm not aware of the other standard that was cited. Appropriate replacement trees would have a height and species that would convey a similar majestic parkway effect that was popular during the city beautiful movement of this time. The mishmash of trees proposed by staff are not appropriate replacement trees. I attended that first outreach meeting. Ms. Minton and I, and I attended that. Ms. Susan Rose, who leases the Kiwanis Building, attended. A Parks and Rec Commissioner, a gentleman who lives across the street on Arroyo, whose primary interest is in getting the cables undergrounded, and another young man. That's the input the city got. Apparently, two others attended the second meeting. Okay, let me just wrap up.
You have three minutes, so.
Okay, I request as a mitigation measure that appropriate replacement trees be recommended by a qualified cultural landscape architect to maintain the historical and cultural context of the original trees. I request as an additional mitigation measure that the trees be documented, photographed according to certain standards called HABs here, as we did for the adobes that were demolished, and those are then filed with the National Archives and accessible online. It just seems unthinkable that the city can wipe this historic city resource off the face of the map without implementing any of these mitigation measures. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Okay, that was a little long, but thank you. Ms. Minton?
Sandra Minton, 66 Northam Avenue in San Carlos. Regarding the 23 iron bark eucalyptus trees in Burton Park, Dr. Jones states that the, there were no original plants found for Burton Park in the city's files or in the files at the Museum for San Carlos History. Ms. Vonk and I included with our comments copies of photos showing the young trees along Cedar and Arroyo. These photos were dated 1947. From the 1947 photos, one would calculate that the iron barks would be 65 or years or older, qualifying them as heritage trees. One of the copied photos has been enlarged to cover a large section of the south wall at the museum. It seems difficult to miss, as it seems Mrs. Jones did not, Dr. Jones did not see it. In order to preserve the historic character of the landscape, the parkway effect, the plantings for Cedar Street need to grow tall and have characteristics of the iron bark trees, such as the tall nature, compact, thick trunks, and spreading canopies that connect with each other up at the top. The trees along Arroyo need to be shorter as it is a requirement for them not to interfere with the utility lines. It would be wonderful if somehow we could, could underground the lines and that that might be a future project to be taken on by the city. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. One more on this item?
How extraordinary the tree should use this time to come down. I don't talk to trees myself, but I'll have to think about it twice in future. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Clapper for the sympathy she showed to Pat Bell at the retreat several weeks ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is a public comment, all right, excuse me, a public hearing. Do we have any other speakers? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion?
Well, I would-
Looks like you're about to say something?
Yes, I was going to make a motion.
Well, before you make a motion, I just got a couple of comments. I'm kind of in shock. I find it unbelievable that anybody could suggest that the city put us in this position. That study was done in November of last year. We voted in January to take these trees out, and five people almost lost their lives. What, what's today? The 20, 21 days ago? Unbelievable. How much more time do we have to take? I'm just, I'm in total shock. These trees should have come out a long time ago. We can find other trees to plant. We can argue all day about what trees to plant. Those trees need to come out now, all 22 of them.
I just have one question before we move forward, and that is regarding what was said about a proper cultural landscape report. And rather than go into the details of that, I, my question is simply, has it been, it looked like what the, what Mr. Long presented to us is that the trees have been chosen. Is that a final decision, or are we still in process on that, or what's the status of the project in that regard on selecting trees and so forth?
This is a recommendation that we have made, and we made that to the community, and as was alluded to, there were members of the community that made comments on that. This has been recommended by our park superintendent and has, has been vetted enough to where we think that we're very comfortable with the trees that have been recommended at this time. We, we can make changes to that if the council desires for further discussion. This certainly isn't cemented and final, but it is our recommendation to, to go with what has been presented to you this evening.
Okay. And just one other question I wanted to address or issue, and that, it was brought up about making sure that we have proper documentation and so forth of what was there, and have we given any thought to that? I know you've showed us pictures of, you know, different things, but I'm thinking of it, you know, in the historical manner.
I can ask the planning department if there's anything that we're required to do along that lines at this point.
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. We did include in option one of the recommendation that you could direct us to do the proper photo recordation, and I just also want to mention that Dr. Laura Jones is also here if you had questions specific of her analysis or what the require, the Secretary of the Interior requirements are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a few questions, too.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't-
Mr. Long, the comment was made by one of the speakers that, or request was made that, that the report indicate that these are heritage trees that are being removed. My understanding is heritage trees is a legal definition, or, and I was curious as to whether, what staff's position on that is.
Yes, the determination is that they are not heritage trees by the species alone. They're not heritage trees, is that correct?
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. When you amended the zoning ordinance last year, you also did amendments to the municipal code, and in both the zoning ordinance and the municipal code, our tree ordinance was altered to have more protections for trees that are more heritage in nature, and their girth could be smaller. So they're typically trees that are native to the area. What got changed was a definition of, of the size of trees which are significant, we call them now significant, and heritage trees really have to do with indigenous trees or trees. These would be similar to trees planted by founders, and we define founders as trees planted before incorporation of the city. Since these were probably planted in the 30s, they do not also qualify for a founder's tree.
Thank you. My, we may wish to stay up there because my next question may involve you also, Ms. Nelson. There was also a comment made by one of the speakers in, in the written material that, that probably, I think the same speaker had supplied to us ahead of time, that basically was saying that a cultural landscape report should have been done rather than the approach that was taken. I'd just like to understand, I'm not criticizing our choice, I just want to understand the basis of our choice. Is this an area where we have discretion as to how we go about evaluating whether we need a cultural landscape report or not?
Yes, to make your determination for SEQA, if Dr. Jones would like to correct me, I'll invite her up, but if there were federal funding involved, and this was a National Environmental Policy Act test, then perhaps we would require this report. But the, the SEQA analysis is whether or not taking out the trees keeps the park from some future designation as a federal designated landmark. And the conclusion of the study was that it, just by its association with Mr. Burton, is still eligible. So we could go to the expense to do a cultural landscape report. We do have those old photos. What we do not have is the original landscape plan that was prepared by a then landscape architect who worked for San Mateo County Parks Department, and we do not find that in our own files, nor did we find it at the museum.
Okay, thank you. Last question, which, which may be a Mr. Rubin's question. As I have been getting steeped into SEQA and EIR learning, one of the things that I have been learning about is there is, there is a process inadvertently that sometimes get, sometimes happens where a project gets approved, because we are allowed to approve projects that, that have environment, have significant environmental impacts, and then that essentially resets the bar for a subsequent project. I don't know of any subsequent projects that would involve Burton Park, but one of the comments that one of the speakers made sort of caught my ear in that regard, which is, can you, is there anything in the reports that we have in front of us that would effectively make it easier than it currently is to do some kind of modification to the park in the future because, by virtue of removal and replacement of the trees?
The, I think the issue you're talking about is a baseline issue.
Yes, exactly.
Which I don't think applies to this situation. I mean, really, the issue that you're, that's being presented tonight is the removal of the trees. The SEQA document was brought back and it was recirculated to deal with the historic resource issue. The consultants and the initial study show that it's, the trees themselves are not a historic resource. They also don't affect the future potential eligibility of the park for designation as a historic resource or landmark or the designation such as that. So I don't think the baseline, I mean, we also are proposing replacement of the trees, and that's a factor in the, in the, the study and the approval that you're going to make tonight. So I just don't see that the removal of these trees affects any future designation or historic nature of the park.
Thank you. Those are all my questions, and I was willing to make a motion, too, but I think Ms. Clapper-
Well, actually- You got started on a motion, and-
I was, Mr. Mayor, I was, what I was trying to do was follow the directions that we kind of set for ourselves in our retreat where we were going to, after we had the public comment, we were going to make a motion and then have the discussion as related to the motion. And since there's, there's going to be two motions related to this, I was going to get the first one out of the way. I also have comments, but I was going to do the motion first. So I can proceed with my comments, and then we can do the motion. I don't know if you have a preference-
And just to the point of the procedure, I think the reason you saw us do what we did is because we, the public comment, and public comment, or, excuse me, public hearings are a tad different because you hear from the public, they raise issues, and sometimes their issues are technical in nature and require us going back to the staff and asking some questions, which is, I think, what you just witnessed.
Right.
To get clarification on some things. So if you're prepared now, though, to make a motion, we will, we can do that.
Will I still get to make my comments after the motion?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Just checking, I don't want to. Okay, well, then I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution, number 2012 dash-
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, certifying the initial study and revised negative declaration for the Burton Park tree removal and replacement in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
And, you want a second? I'll second it. Okay, so you've seconded.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a friendly amendment?
We have, well, let's have a little discussion on it, and if you want to put your amendment in terms of part of the discussion, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if my colleagues would be willing to consider amending and to include and direct staff to photographically record the existing trees.
So as is in the-
Item one.
Recommendations, item one, right. Are you friendly to the amendment?
That's, that's fine with me. It needs to be included in the motion, or it could just be a separate direction to staff as part of the, the implementation, but whatever, the council members-
Well, as the author of the motion, you need to either accept it or reject it, and Mr. Collins is the one who gave the second to it, would have to also second that.
Okay, well, I would accept the amendment. I don't think it takes anything away from the initial intent.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you.
I will second it again.
Okay. The only other item that I'd like to bring up on this is, and perhaps we can take it up as a second, second direction, and City Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but two things I'm mindful of is there is, whether these are technically historical or not, I think it might behoove us to do something with some of the tree material rather than just throw it away. We might save some of it, maybe a cross section of the trunk or something, and see if the historical, the museum would like to keep something like that. I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but it could be something we could do to have a little reminder around about, you know, if you go over to the museum, there's lots of little neat things that have been, people have saved over the years, which is what makes the museum what it is. So keeping something like that might be interesting. And the other thing that caught my mind, caught my attention was what was said about this parkway effect, and I do believe that was the original intent, although I will say this, you know, to Ms. Vonk's concerns, and I understand them, and I have a heart for what you're talking about, partly as a, you know, as an architect, designer and someone who works in that field, and I did landscape architecture for a while, and you see the pictures when you go to Filoli, for instance, where they have those paintings. And a lot of those trees that you see in those paintings that are either applied directly to the wall, or sometimes they're very large paintings, that, that classic California look from that period with the soft sunlight coming through and so forth, those trees that you see in many of those paintings are eucalyptus trees. Poor choice for our area. And- And, but you could see at the time, in the 30s, when they chose them, and they didn't know much about the tree, and they brought it over here from down under, and they planted them, and they grew backwards, and they were problematic trees. They did not come through as those who brought them here thought they would. And all you have to do is go up to Woodside and go to Wonderland Park and walk through there and see the forest of those trees that are there, and how badly they're doing now, and the duff that they litter the forest floor with, and the fire hazard that they are. And you can see how sometimes decisions we make, and we'll make them now in our time period, are not always the best decisions. So yes, they're, you know, you could look at the historical argument, but not everything that was done in the past that is historical was a good decision. So I feel also for Mr. Collins and what he's talking about, people nearly dying. I had a friend who, a cyclist, who got killed by an eucalyptus tree in Los Altos Hills. He was riding his bike and happened to be in the wrong place at the wrong time. They're dangerous trees. I think the black park's a little different, but our experience is maybe not. So I'm trying to be sensitive to all that, that's why I'm suggesting maybe, you know, if we were to save a cross-section or something like that...
And Mr. Mayor, I think both of your suggestions are good, and I think both of them would be appropriate for our discussion with the second item that is here on this same topic for the actual reauthorization of the replacement. And we could give direction to staff about how that replacement is done at that point in time.
You're right. Take it up then. Okay, very good. So we'll take this motion under consideration and then move on to the next part.
Yeah, well, actually...
Oh.
I would like to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have to make sure she gives her comments.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, this new routine. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to commend the intent from the members of the public, looking at conserving the city's resources. However, I think as being a part of a cultural landscape, when preservation is but one of the four ways, four possible treatments of a cultural landscape, and the others being rehabilitation, restoration, and reconstruction. And preservation is actually the most restrictive of the four different ways you can deal with a cultural landscape. And I will add that I have worked with Gamble Garden in Palo Alto for the last 12 years on various committees and boards, and this is an issue that has been wrestled with. They manage a square block of property that is owned by the city of Palo Alto, and the organization manages it on behalf of the city. And it was originally built in 1902. And looking at, do you restore, do you preserve, do you rehabilitate? It's a question that these groups have, with Gamble Garden, have wrestled with in the 25 years that they've been managing the property for the city. And looking at those same conversations, and it's very similar to what we're talking about right now. And what we're really looking at here is rehabilitation of this as a cultural landscape, meaning we're not trying to replace the same trees because, as the mayor pointed out, given what we know now, we wouldn't choose those trees again, we wouldn't plant them there. So there needs to be a different way of looking at this other than preservation, and I would encourage the members of the public to be open to that option. I think the, as the mayor discussed, the idea of having, you know, a row of similar trees going down the street is something that was part of the original aesthetic. If that's, that, you know, sounds like probably will not be part of what we do if we do a mix of trees. And in this case, the selection of the trees really, the type and the condition of the trees is really detracted from that. So perhaps a change, but having those trees, again, it's that idea of rehabilitating what is there in the park to make it be of benefit to the community. So I am pleased to see that we're looking at doing this, and I think it will, in line with other improvements we're looking at doing at Burton Park, be a real benefit to the community.
Thank you. And not to cut anybody else short, do we have any comments down here? Okay.
No, Mr. Mayor, I think, I agree with most comments made by the council. It's a very difficult thing to take a tree down. I know no one likes to do it. In this situation, though, I think it's, for a number of reasons, as the other council members have mentioned, I think it's appropriate.
All right, so Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, and then we have this other item associated with this. So now we have the other item, which is reauthorizing staff to replace the trees. And see if we have any discussion or motions on this one. Let me find my place.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we reauthorize staff to replace the eucalyptus trees with trees suitable for that location.
Second. Okay, discussion.
I, I'm fine with that, but I would like to have us discuss the ideas that you had suggested, Mr. Mayor, as directions to staff.
So the, the, two things that I suggested was, one, saving some kind of material from what we had, and offering it to the museum. And the second related a bit to what Ms. Clapper was talking about, of possibly looking at some other, you know, getting the aesthetics if we could, but if that would require some staff time and perhaps some other hearings.
Through the chair.
Sounds like Mr. Grisilli is, if I may jump in here, your motion is just go forward with the recommendations that are there.
Right, but I certainly accept a friendly amendment to take some of whatever we need on, you know, is appropriate to put it in the museum. The second, I'm not, because I'm not a botanist. And we could sit here and say, I like that color. No, 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 I like that color. No, no, I like that tree. If folks would like to do that, I'd love to form a subcommittee, and they can do whatever they want, but this council member won't be picking trees. I leave that up to experts, and I am not an expert.
Right, and I don't think we're suggesting that we pick the trees, but just that we might have some more input from the public.
Not on the second one, I can't, I can't buy into the second one. So a friendly amendment, I don't know if Mr. Collins would agree to second on the first one, but I can't buy into the second one.
All right.
But a separate motion could be made, so if they want, people want to do that.
I would like to interpret the last part of that as, with the trees suitable for that location, as being something that staff will take and will evaluate the trees that were identified by the public to be included, and think about what really is suitable for the location. My one concern is there's nine different trees that have been selected, and there's 23, or now 24 with the red gum, 24 trees to replace. So we're looking at, it can either be a hodgepodge of trees, or it'll be great aesthetically, and I have kind of mixed feelings about the number of trees. But I know some of them are similar to trees that are already in the park, because I think when you're doing a landscape design, you want a certain amount of repetition. Also, like Mr. Long mentioned, some of the trees will be different at different times of the year, the color, and that is aesthetically pleasing. But I would defer to staff, whether they want to look at this in-house, or in working with the arborist that would be helping them to remove the existing trees and replace them, getting some additional direction from that arborist. But I would leave it up to staff to define the best way to go about doing that.
And I guess, having made the comment that I did, but sitting here thinking about it, I can tell you, you know, just as I said, and Ms. Clapper repeated, that knowing what we know now about these eucalyptus, we probably wouldn't choose those again. I can tell you, back in the days when I was working for a landscape architect, it was not uncommon to choose one species of trees and do a boulevard. And it's very pretty, but what landscape architects have discovered, as I think Mr. Long referred to, is the problem with that is you do run the risk that if a disease hits that tree, it hits all the trees. And so actually having a mix of species, while it may not be the same kind of effect, oftentimes is a better solution. So I guess I will take away my comments about, you know, the aesthetic aspect of it, but I would like to have something there that, you know, however the staff wants to do it, retrieve some material, share it with the museum, see what they want to do with it, and that sort of thing, so.
I think, so, so doing something that would be of a recognition of the historic nature of the past condition of the park.
And again, I would leave that to staff on how they want to do it, and how they want to coordinate with the museum, but...
So are we amending the...
If you're amenable to it.
If you're amenable to it. I'm amenable, yeah. I amended the first part with the museum part, yes.
All right, can we have a, sort of a restating of that, so I know what I'm...
Sure. So I'm basically saying the City Council reauthorized staff to replace under 23 eucalyptus trees with trees suitable to that location, and to direct staff to work with the history museum and arborist or whoever to take something that, make sure that we have a record and a memory of what those trees were.
I'll second that. Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. That was a yes if you didn't hear it, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just before we continue, I just, I had one other thought I was wondering, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, but in light of the fact that we had this incident, there are several other eucalyptus trees on city-owned property, property, I believe, particularly those along San Carlos Avenue. It would be nice to see a feasibility study on those trees and their safety, and whether and what the cost would be to have those removed. One of those trees did come down a few years ago, and did crush a car, and did injure a person inside. And once again, the city was extremely lucky that that person wasn't killed. We've now had three trees destroyed by falling eucalyptus trees. At some point, I would like to see us study those trees along San Carlos Avenue as well.
Through the chair, I'm not sure that those trees are on public property, I don't know...
I don't know if they are or not, but I would like to know, are they on an easement or whatever?
I would say the thing to do, Mr. Collins, is to discuss it with staff offline, and if you are finding some support there, discuss it with another council member, bring it up under Council Reports, and we can see if we can get consensus for something like that.
I will do that, thank you. Very good.
We also have a retreat later this week, so...
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we do, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
That's true, and I meant to mention that under Council Reports to let the members know, so I'll do it now if it's okay, to, that we do have a council retreat coming up August 30th at the library, 8:30 in the morning until we finish. That's with the council and staff, and the public is welcome to attend.
I'm going to look at my calendar that far ahead.
Okay.
You'll be there.
Let's move on to item 10A, which is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04, Section 15.04125, San Carlos Green Building Ordinance to Include Green Point and LEED Mr. Valley? Hello?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, I'm Chris Valley, building official. This evening, council has before them an amendment to the City of San Carlos Green Building Ordinance to formally include the use of Green Point and LEED minimum standards for residential and commercial projects built in San Carlos. On March 26th, council received a report and reviewed the city's green building ordinance that has been in effect since January 1st, 2011. At that meeting, council directed staff to collaborate with stakeholders and bring back a draft ordinance that formally includes the use of a point system and/or LEED standards consistent with what other agencies are utilizing. With that, two stakeholder meetings were held in the development of the revised ordinance presented to council this evening. One meeting was with San Carlos Green, and a second stakeholder meeting representing citizens of San Carlos, architects, developers, contractors, commercial real estate, San Carlos Green, again, and Sierra Club, was also held. Staff, based upon that input, and the perceived input from council, we created this, I should say, staff created this compliance matrix, which is also in your, the report, included with my staff report. And it's reflective of what we received at these stakeholder meetings. Some of the key changes with the revised ordinance is, for the most part, the project description stays the same. We've divided commercial up, though, into tenant improvement, $500,000 or greater, which is reflective of CalGreen minimum. Additions, 2,000 square feet or greater, again, reflective of CalGreen minimum. And then added new commercial, less than 10,000, as LEED certified, and new commercial, 10,000 or greater, as LEED silver. This somewhat is similar to what other agencies have implemented, which is, has been a criticism of our original version of the ordinance. Regarding multifamily, the project description is pretty much staying the same, same with single family and mixed use, those are all staying the same. Key differences, though, is the required checklist. You'll see Green Point up and down that column, as well as LEED, or and/or Green Point and LEED for mixed-use construction. The minimum standard is reflective of what other agencies have implemented, LEED silver, LEED certified. Where our ordinance somewhat differs from other cities is just the adherence to CalGreen for tenant improvements and alterations, i.e. additions. Residential projects are reflective with, reflected by 75 points as a minimum standard, and 50 points for simple additions, 500 square feet or greater. The stakeholders felt that the addition of 500 square feet or greater should be just more of an educational tool for people to learn about, you know, the green building requirements, hopefully through the Build It Green checklist, and just simply use that as a, as an educational tool for people as they submit their project. These checklists will also need to be implemented with projects that require planning commission approval, such that the applicant has a heads-up, the intent is that the applicant has a heads-up as to what the requirements will be. And then, an important part of this revised ordinance is the verification column. You'll note that there's yeses all up and down that column with the exception of a no by the additions of 500 square feet. And what that means, and as is stated in my report, is that that's indicative of third-party verification. I believe I made it fairly clear in my report that with the new version of the building division, as I call it, we have reduced staff, we're running streamlined, yet streamlined and efficiently, and so our focus is on state mandated code and keeping up to date and up to speed with that. So that's the matrix, and kind of went through it very quickly, so I'm sure there'll be some questions about that. But I also want to go to, the revised version of the ordinance has, I've run by the California Energy Commission, and it'll be, it'll need to be formally submitted to that agency for review, assuming council moves forward with adoption of this revised ordinance. The review time by the commission is in the ballpark of 30 to 60 days. And the one change to the revised ordinance that I provided to you this evening is a slight change in the reference energy efficiency standards in the ordinance is continually references 2008. And it was suggested that we just simply keep it at the most current version of the standards, such that we don't have to keep coming back and updating this ordinance with each new version of the energy code. And also, next year, later next year, when I bring to you the adoption of the 2013 building codes, we'll have to resubmit a cost-effectiveness analysis for the green building ordinance as well. That's somewhat of a, I don't know, a cookie-cutter template that agencies can use to... That's somewhat of a, I don't know, a cookie cutter template that agencies can use to resubmit to the Energy Commission. Last go around, we, there was a cost effectiveness, cost effectiveness survey by, I think it was Gable and Associates, that a lot of agencies used, that they submitted to the, to the Energy Commission. And in closing, I'd just like to make it clear that the original version of this ordinance has been viewed by some as leading the charge and others as not enough, or not doing enough. It's always been staff's intent to honor the direction the state has taken in the world of green building, energy conservation, and code development, but to also include more projects than what is required by baseline minimum. So this is also in keeping with our permit streamlining goals and keeping in check the costs associated with building in San Carlos. And with that, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valley. Questions? Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although before I start this, do we perhaps do adhere to what we talked about earlier? Need to have a motion in a second before?
No, 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 we go through the questions.
Questions first?
First, yeah.
Just a couple of things. First off, to clarify, I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, that for commercial additions, or 2,000 square feet or greater, and tenant improvements of half a million dollars or greater in value, where it says CalGreen, it's, in my simple mind, simple shorthand, it's CalGreen plus 15%?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not just CalGreen?
It's CalGreen plus 15, and actually, the compliance matrix that I included with my report has that stated.
Yeah, I saw that, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an inconsistency that was confusing me. This particular item actually engendered quite a bit of discussion between myself and Mr. Malpe, because when I, when I read the proposal, I recall saying, "Mr. Malpe, gee, this somehow seems different from what I was expecting," and his reply was, "I think it's what you specifically asked us for." And so that actually caused me to go back and dig into our video archives to watch the video. Having done that, it seems, I just want to check my understanding here, that my takeaway from our earlier discussion was that, was that ideally, we were looking for a point-based system, which would have flexibility in it for project sponsors and designers, but not necessarily hitching our wagon to Green Point or LEED. And I, as I understand it, the reason the proposal is structured the way it is, is because to do that would essentially, to do what I just described, would essentially require us to sort of create our own Green Point rating system, which creating it would be expensive, administering it would also be expensive.
There'd be a problem with consistency with other agencies as well.
And there would be, particularly because other agencies have begun adopting Green Point and/or LEED.
Across the board.
So, in a sense, part of what this is, is a compromise between, it retains the notion of flexibility, because it's a point-based system, but it uses a third-party definition of what the points are. Green Point or LEED.
Correct. It's, it's, my only answer to that is, it's a, it's a, it's a region-wide recognized point system that we can.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not one that's been created by a civic body, or a county organization, or a statewide organization.
No.
It's from a third party.
Yes.
In that sense. What, if we adopt this, what's the change in cost? And you can just, I know it varies depending on the project, but just, you know, walk me through what the change in cost would be for a typical, if there's such a thing, residential modification or project in San Carlos, and a typical commercial modification or project, from adopting this? Because my, my sense is, when I, when I was looking at it this way, is currently today there's a fee that somebody pays to the city.
Yes.
In the future, they will continue to pay that fee. Because we have to do the plan check and all the other stuff. And on top of that, there will also be a cost associated with getting the Green Point rating or the LEED rating.
That, that cost, I believe on average is approximately a dollar per square foot. And I gave an example, actually, of a, of a single-family residence, say 3,500 square foot residence, one could expect to pay in the ballpark of, you can do the math, $3,500.
Fair enough.
Now, that, though, that, I've done research in that area, and there's no real regulation on what is charged for a Green Point raider. It's, that, that can vary. But a safe number to throw out, I believe, is $1 per square foot.
If I can tag on to that, then, so you're talking for new construction?
I'm talking for projects.
I guess, let me, if I may, delve further into that question, because one of the major categories there, where you have to get verification and score 75 points, is residential reconstruction, and you give a definition of what that is in here. And you and I both know, trying to come up with affected square footage area when you're using that definition, it can be a little bit squishy, but you and I also both know that you can take a, say, an existing 1,200 square foot home, and end up in San Carlos easily with a 3,000 square foot home, and so you've got 1,800 new square feet, and you probably have about at least 600, if not the total 1,200, affected existing square footage.
Yeah, and the, the.
So are you, I guess, then to put the tail on my, my question there, is, are you saying, then, in that example, let's say you had an 1,800 square foot addition and 600 square feet of affected area, so now you've got 2,400 square feet, that's a dollar a square foot for that in total?
It's a good ballpark assumption. And it should be noted that residential reconstructions are, as you also know, is, you know, we're saving three studs and we're calling it a remodel, but it's really a new house.
Right.
For the most part.
Okay.
When we get to the discussion, I have some other things to talk about, but those are my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions?
I just, I just have one. You said it's a dollar per square foot for the LEED certification?
No, I did not say that. I said it's a dollar per square, I'm sorry, I may have not clarified that. It's, it's on average.
On average?
On average, a dollar per square foot for a Green Point raider.
Okay. And I assume that the homeowner, or whoever having the structure built is paying that?
The homeowner will be paying that.
And who are they paying it to?
The Green Point raider.
Third party.
Third party.
They're paying it to a third party?
Yes.
Okay, that, thank you.
That's an incredible.
I guess, do they get to pick, or do you get to pick?
The Green Raiders?
There's a whole list of Green Raiders out there that they can pick.
They can pick, so they choose?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and again, it's all, whether they pick person A, B, C, D, or E, the average is about a dollar?
Based upon my research.
I understand, no, I, I mean, based upon your research, I appreciate that. I doubt there would be much difference.
Yeah.
You know, I can't believe there would be, because it's still, it's a, it's a business, so they have to be competitive.
Yes, yeah.
You know, so, okay.
Okay, I have a few questions. Number, number one is, you had said that in 2011, that's when we, you referenced right at the beginning of your oral report about 2011, and it's not in our staff report, I don't, I didn't see, so what were you saying there?
That was when the, our green building ordinance became effective, was January 1st, 2011.
January 1, 2011, okay. And then, at least when I was going over the agenda with the city manager, he said this was on the agenda because of the council had asked to look at this scoring system. Is that because of, and maybe Mark knows, it sounds like it was because of the current council, and maybe you had brought this up, or? I'm just wondering if it had to do with the, you know, the council's had such a huge change. Majority of us weren't here, you know, not too, too long ago. So I'm wondering if it was the impetus of the people you see up here, maybe without Karen, or maybe with Karen?
Because it goes back to, it was from January, right? Isn't that the video that you?
It was in March.
In March, I'm sorry, March.
It was March, so, Mr. Mayor Klein was, was still serving at that time.
Okay.
So I think from that point, the point I was thinking of, the only change has been, Ms. Clapper?
Ms. Clapper, okay. So that's why I asked that question, I was just curious about that. Mr. Valley, in your experience, then, the, I'm curious, because I haven't, in, you know, you know my line of work, I haven't run into, I don't think, trying to achieve CalGreen plus 15% with, that's the Title 24 part of it, correct?
That's the energy, the energy part, yes. Actually, Title 24 is all the building codes, and it's oftentimes mislabeled as just energy, but Title 24, Part 6.
Yeah.
Energy, yes.
Can you give us some examples about how that gets achieved, the 15%?
With the 15% over, it's, it can be anywhere from throwing in cool roof, or I should say, implementing cool roofs, more efficient windows, more insulation, reflective roof sheathing, more efficient HVAC, goes on and on.
Well, some of this, let me, let me discuss this a little bit with you. So insulation, right now, we're, like, if you have a 2x4 stud wall, you're at R13, you're at R21 with a 2x6, you know, space in the roof, or you can get up to R30, right? Usually, you're insulating the floor these days, although the effectiveness of that is really pretty questionable, but, you know, let's say we throw an R19 in the floor, windows are generally .4 U-value, double pane, what are we doing to the windows to, can we really get that much more? I guess argon gas, reflective, so forth? I'm trying to, I'm, I'm gonna.
I know you're getting, I'm technical.
I know I am.
And you're losing us all.
Well.
And you guys can have a great conversation, but the rest of us are out of it, and I was in the business.
Yeah, well, it's.
Is there a question here, I guess, Michael?
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
So what I'm driving at is, so we've, we've got the dollar per square foot for the LEED certification, that's, what you're saying is, those are the ones where it says verification, yes, 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 that's.
Yes.
That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So there's that cost, there's the additional cost for grading 15% higher than what you would normally be required for current Title 24 standards.
Correct.
And.
And there's an additional cost with the, the more stringent codes coming down the road with the next code cycle.
And that's something, well, so I've got a question in there, too, but what I'm driving at is this paragraph that you have here in the staff report about improved standards at the state level will increase the cost of a typical new single-family, and then this is what you're saying, by approximately $2,300, C-Attachment 1, and then you come down here and you say, "Total estimated increased cost to build a new single-family residence, assuming 3,500 square feet in San Carlos, is about $5,800, energy savings," and you go into that.
Yeah.
Are we supposed to then add those two together, or what are we supposed to do with those numbers?
Well, no, the, the, you missed a line there. The, the, the more stringent standards that are coming down the chute, so to speak.
2014?
Yes.
Right.
It's estimated that a typical new family, single-family residence will, the increased cost to build that residence will be about $2,300, as I stated.
Okay.
Then, if you tack on to that, and hopefully my math isn't that far off here, for a typical 3,500 square foot house, $1 per square foot, add that on to the 2,290, and that's, that should be your 57, the $5,790 increased cost to build a single-family residence in San Carlos.
Oh, I see. So you're talking about things that, future?
I'm, yes, looking toward the future, yes.
Okay, so all, that whole paragraph's looking at 2014?
It's looking at not only 2014, but this, this revised, but the, not only 2014, but also the proposed revisions in this ordinance.
Okay, so.
It's a combination of the two.
So that was part of my question, is how much overlay is there between what you see here and what we'll see in 2014?
Well, that's kind of a, another component of this whole discussion, is the state marching down that road anyway.
Sure.
So, to what degree adding a layer of Green Points to our ordinance adds for value, I, I don't have an immediate, I don't have an answer for that right now. It's, it's, you know, it's perceived as being greener, I believe there is a measuring, a method of measuring how much greener, I don't have that answer right now.
So we, so what you're, what I hear you saying is, we kind of don't know, because we don't know exactly, we have an idea what the state, the state did a general marching forward, they said, "We're going to go this direction with a," they passed some legislation, right? They said, "We're."
They're going down this road whether we like it or not.
Yeah, but they haven't given the nitty-gritty specifics. What you've given here is some nitty-gritty specifics, and so we don't know if we're going to be further down the road than the state, or a little behind the state. So we don't know if this figure that you give here in this paragraph is going to be okay, it's, we're going to start paying it now, or people who do projects are going to start paying it now, and when the state passes their law, we may pay a little bit more, or we're going to get, our, our customers, San Carlos, are going to get, be in the position of paying more than what they would have paid if we had just let the state do their business and we all, and we just stick with what the state's doing.
Right. And the added cost with this ordinance sands what the state's doing, is, is the, the verification,
Right.
you know, raider requirement and so forth.
Okay. Had a question about third party. I just got an email today inviting me to go to Tempi Arizona and learn how to do LEED. I just might take him up on that. But, let's say, let's say Mr. Crap here, he's an architect, so let's say he turns in a project and he knows how to do LEED rating, so he turns in his project and he does his own LEED rating. That's rebuttal, you can't do that? He has to go hire Suzanne Emerson to do the LEED rating, because, you know?
Well, once we're getting into the.
That's the definition of third party, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I believe, I actually even have that here.
Excuse me for using the daggers there.
Well, let's put it this way, the definition of third party is, the city's not going out and looking for it, at it. It's an independent contractor, for lack of a better phrase, similar to, you know, the, for instance, the special inspections we require for pull tests.
Yeah.
And all this other stuff that.
But, okay, that's a similarity, but in that example, for instance, you know, John Smith Engineering does the structural engineering for a project, he can't do his own pull test, he's got to go hire, you know, Mr. Charles Linkley's engineering firm to do the pull test.
Correct.
That's third party.
Well, right, that's, that's the third party. He can do his own structural observation.
Right.
For that project.
Could I, could I cut to Chase for the, for the uninitiated here? Basically, if a person's an architect, can they do their own green, or they have to go to?
Oh, yeah, that was my question.
I know, but I'm just trying to cut to it here.
Right.
Because they have to get a third party, to me, a third party means a third party, okay? That, to me, would be a conflict of interest, and I'm not, I'm not speaking about any.
It'd be to me, too, but I'm just.
Be like an accountant or whatever, so I can't believe, and if it's not in here, it should be in here, that you can't do your own.
The definition says as long as they're certified.
Yeah, that's.
But you can do your own.
As long as they're certified, so we probably want to change that.
I don't know, I just, isn't that a, so you charge yourself, or what, you charge the client an extra, I don't know, whatever. Okay, thank you.
All right. And then my last question, and sorry to have so many questions, but the, earlier you had up there about submitting to the Energy Commission.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
That's something that we have to do as a city, right? You have to do it as, yeah, but.
It's already received a pre-review, so to speak.
Okay, so, is there a cost associated with that?
No, there is not.
There is not?
No.
Okay, just the staff time to, to work on it and so forth?
It's the staff time to work on it, on it, but like I said, it's already been given a pre-review.
Right, okay.
And they're, they've already, the revised language I've already.
Okay, I was just looking to see if there was a cost.
Can I just share a brief statement about verification, just, and it's from the, the compliance matrix, just, it'll hopefully help clarify that. Verification, Green Point verification and Green Point raider certified through Build It Green, or LEED verification from LEED professional certified for the appropriate building category by the U.S. Green Building Council. CalGreen verification may be by, may be by design professional of record.
So, so in other words, the state of the art, just so I understand, I mean, this is what is done other places?
This is language shared from other ordinances.
That's what I'm saying, so it's done, so even though I may feel like some, there's a conflict of interest somewhere, it's industry standard.
Yes.
Actually, standard, it's used other places.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay, all right. No necessarily do it, but I'm just saying, it's, it is accepted, for whatever reason. Now, let me ask you, okay, let me ask a more pertinent question. Do you agree with that? Well, I mean, I, I mean, it's in, you've got it in here, but I, I just, it just seems like the, the fox guard in the hen house. The fox guard in the hen house.
I understand, for the sake of green building and the, the direction of this ordinance, I, I'm just going to say, I don't have a problem with it.
But isn't someone verifying something that?
It's not unlike.
Give me an example, please.
It's not unlike an engineer putting their stamp on their engineering, and certifying that, that they have engineered it according to the standards.
To me, this is another, personally, it's another step. It's an add-on. It's like an auditor auditing his own business.
Well.
He's qualified, why can't he do it? You know, I mean, I, I just, it just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, except for what we're looking for is certification, not, it's, it's not meant to be an audit, it's meant to be certification. The person's also designing plans in accordance with the.
But who verifies the?
Code, and they're, they're, in essence, by putting them in.
I can't find.
Certifying that they've done it in compliance. We check and review at our end.
Not, just, I suspect what typically happens here is you essentially are relying upon the certification body, Greenpoint, to basically police themselves. And if they were to find that some Greenpoint, you know, rated designer was skirting their own rules, theoretically at least, they would pull his ability, his or her ability to do it. Now, whether that would actually happen, it's a different issue, okay?
Whatever.
Okay. I think Mr. Collins has a question.
I just had one last question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm trying to get a handle on, you know, how much the extra green building ordinance costs someone when they build. What's a good number for the average cost per square foot? If I hired a contractor tomorrow to build, say, a 3,000 square foot home, what would they normally charge me, aside from, you know?
Contractor, what, what that contractor will charge per square?
Yeah, no, no, like, per square foot, is it $200, is it two and a quarter, is it 300?
That, that dollar amount is, I, my prior contractor charges, I shouldn't even say what he charges, but it, that, that dollar amount is across the board.
Mr. Collins, to.
Oh.
Because it depends on what you, you can, no, it's impossible.
So there's no, there's no, like, industry average, or?
No, no, no. I can bring 10 guys in here and they'll give you 10 quotes on what it's going to cost you to do your house.
And a lot of that depends on how your house is going to look.
Exactly.
You know, go buy faucets or.
That I do know. Don't know much about construction.
Is there a minimum, like, these days, 250?
The only way I can answer that question is that we, we have in our fee schedule a square foot multiplier of $179 per square foot, which is not even touchable for the low end.
All right.
Meaning, last, majority of projects are way above that.
So if I said 250, that would.
Can we ask you to go away with the question?
I am, I'm just trying to get a, sort of a reasonable baseline. I'm just trying to figure out.
You might be getting close, let's put it that way.
So let's say, I'm just going to use 250. So if I build a 3,000 square foot home, 250 a square foot has cost me $750,000. And if it add, and it costs me about another $5,800 in the, you know, in green building ordinance fees, and I'm just trying to figure out, what percentage of that total construction cost does, do the, do the green building fees cost me? And I, I did the math and it was, like, less than 1%. That's all I was going for.
Yeah, and I think the second paragraph under fiscal implications somewhat alludes to that in my, in my report.
That's, that's really all I wanted to know. I wasn't trying to make a long discussion out of it.
May I ask?
Any other questions?
Yes.
Questions? Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Valley, the, you made an interesting comment in your discussion with, with the mayor, that I just wanted to follow up on. So if, sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. If, if we were to look at a situation where, sorry, let me come back. I have to, I have to reconstruct this question I was going to ask.
Good. All right, thank you, Mr. Valley.
Are there questions?
Well, he, when he thinks it is.
When his Alzheimer's kicks out.
Don't go far away. Why don't we, council, we've got a number of speaker cards, let's go ahead and hear from the public.
Good.
And in the meantime, if you think of your question, you can, okay, sort of in the order that these came in, I guess, we've got quite a few of these, so we're really going to keep you to two minutes, unlike the speaker on the tree. Walker Kellogg. And let's do a little queuing up here, so we can move along. Kathleen Gallagher.
Everybody again?
Absolutely. Are you Walker Kellogg?
I am Walker Kellogg, yes.
All right, yep, go ahead.
Nice to meet you guys, friends and neighbors. I'm new to San Carlos, as of about seven months, and I'm really enjoying it. I just wanted to talk a little bit about encouraging you to vote on accepting this. I think that in order for us to have any semblance of being able to look back at what we've done and to evaluate our, our progress, having a measurement and verification and a system of metrics to look back and say, now, was this a good reason for doing this? What was the cost? How much did it cost upfront? How much money are we saving in the long run? By having a system like this, we are giving ourselves the ability to look back and see, and to evaluate our choices, similar to what you talked about with choosing eucalyptus trees. Now we know that that's not a good decision in many cases. So some of the reasons why I like you to encourage this kind of metric or rating system, green homes historically have more value, more resale value, which translates to property tax, which we can enjoy in the city, lower energy bills. If people are spending less money on their energy bills, they're spending more money downtown. Healthier tenants and occupants, sustainable buildings last longer. Sustainability is not just about green, it's about how much does it cost, how long does it last, how healthy is everybody. Sustainable, sustainably built homes are quieter, and therefore neighbors are happier. And in closing, I'd like to say that happy, healthy people often eat out more, shop more, participate in civic engagement and other types of events, and that's what I'd like to think about when I think of San Carlos. Thank you.
Kathleen Gallagher, followed by Pat Potter.
Good evening, Kathleen Gallagher, 1777 Elizabeth, member of San Carlos Green. We talked a lot about tonight, about the initial cost. We didn't talk a lot about the return on the investment. So I wanted to just throw out some quick facts, that typically, green building can be anywhere from 0 to 2% more than non-green, that the, the life cycle savings is in the neighborhood of 20% of total construction cost, more than 10 times the initial investment. So I really think, Mayor Grocott, as we talk about costs, we need to talk about life cycle costs. This is the same thing about eucalyptus trees, it's taking the long view. The climate action plan for San Carlos, about 40% of our emissions in San Carlos are from energy consumption from residents and businesses. If we continue to build homes that are just standard, that are just code, it's just meeting the minimum. I think Chris Valley did a great job of balancing not leading the charge and not falling back. This is a balanced approach. It's a vetted and proven Greenpoint rated, and LEED are proven, proven programs. One quick benefit for residents for the Greenpoint rated program is you have technical expertise right at the beginning of your project to tell you what are the most cost-effective things you can do to get the green points. So I wanted to talk about the return on the investment, not just the initial cost. I think we're looking at the long view for San Carlos. Thank you.
Pat Potter, followed by David Crap.
Good evening. I wanted to point out, I'm with San Carlos Green, and there was a study done last month by two professors. Matthew Kahn is a professor at UCLA Institute of the Environment, the Department of Economics, Department of Public Policy, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, the UCLA Anderson School of Management and the UCLA School of Law. Mills Koch is a visiting scholar at the Goldman School of Public Policy at the University of California at Berkeley, and an associate professor in finance and real estate at Maastricht University in the Netherlands. Last month, they did a study called "The Value of Green Labels in the California Housing Market." The two major findings that they came up with was that based on the average, I'll start with the first one, even the, in a tough economy of recent years, a green certification added an average 9% plus or minus 4% value to a single-family home. Based on the average California home price of 400,000, homes with a green label sell for an average of $34,800 more than comparable homes without a green label. That's $34,800 that we can look in extra property tax and revenue to the city. I'm going to give you each one of these, because there's more to it, but this is, these are the facts.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Mr. Crap? And let's see, following Mr. Crap is Mr. Stafford. Go ahead.
Okay. Last time I was before council, when the green building analysis came up, I was opposed to it because I thought it was too weak. That was a year and a half ago, two years ago, whatever it was, and the council reconsidered, brought up this one. I've met with Chris, and I am very much in support of the current document that he's come up with. And just to try to clarify my position on, San Carlos touts itself as being a green city, of being sustainable, and yet, we're having issues with whether our building code, which is green, our green building code is comparable to what's the rest of the peninsula. That doesn't make any sense to me at all. We're behind right now on what the rest of the peninsula is doing. They've been doing LEED and Greenpoint for years. And so, San Carlos should at least catch up with what the rest of the peninsula is doing. And why Greenpoint and LEED rather than our own separate little deal is because folks like, I'm an architect by profession, folks like I and other architects and developers and builders like to have consistency. And we're all familiar with Greenpoint or LEED because it's out there, everyone uses it. We should be consistent with that. Talk about cost, as an architect, I figure $300 to $400 a square foot for a new house, just to give you an idea. If you figure percentages, we're talking, what, that $5,000 is what, .002% or something, it's minor. The other reason, why do you do Greenpoint? Because, why do you do Greenpoint Raider? Because one of the things that makes a house really work environmentally is that it's sealed well, that it's, that the appliance is, that our, the ductwork is sealed and the, the windows are sealed and so on. And a Greenpoint Raider can come in with a blower door, and they can check that out and make sure that the house meets that requirement. And also whether they're making the, you know, picking the right appliances and so on. And the idea that was someone else mentioned before is when you bring a Greenpoint Raider in, they can lead you through the process, and say you do this, and this, and this, and this will help you, and you have an option. Well, you know, you might want to do, you might want to do a cool roof, or maybe you want to do a more insulation, or, you know, it's not mandated. That's the problem with Cal Green right now, is that everything that Cal Green tells you is mandated, you've got to do it. The beauty of LEED and Greenpoint is you've got a choice. It just simply says you've got to meet X number of points, and you've got, oh, you know, for 75 points, like for Greenpoint, you have about 200, 300 points you can choose from to get those 75. And last but not least, I do affordable housing, I work for Habitat for Humor, you know, some of their projects. All the projects I've done recently have come in at Greenpoint, 130 or more, and it's real easy. It's not that hard to do. It's made, you do it with consistent building products and, and making sure that the house is designed so that they're tight and well insulated. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stafford, followed by Mark Green.
Good evening, Mayor Grocott, members of the council. I'm here this evening in support of the ordinance as drafted. My role was as a stakeholder. The lens from which I viewed this ordinance was as a licensed contractor, contractor, broker, green certified professional, and I'm active in development. You have to look at government acting efficiently and inclusively, and I think this ordinance demonstrates that. From the time that we began to the time that we're here this evening, this ordinance has moved along at a correct speed, and it really brought in a diverse group of folks that frankly you ordinarily don't find in a room unless it's usually a courtroom. Chris did a good job of bringing us together to a common core. You don't have to believe in global warming to know that this is a good ordinance. With respect to the special inspections, I think Councilman Griselli brings up a good point. There is a conflict of interest in, as a Greenpoint professional, for instance, as a developer, I wouldn't be allowed to inspect my own project. I would like to, I'd find someone to bill, but it is the fox in the hen house. So that is precluded. What it also does, that Mr. Rubens could appreciate, is it starts to tighten the potential litigation that happens when cities are inspecting too many things themselves. These special inspections are a godsend. As you amortize our areas of exposure from litigation, special inspections decrease that. But I really asked the council, and the mayor in particular, to step back in a larger context and see, how does this fit into the overall environmental movement within inside our community? We used to have a program called SCOOP, we don't have it anymore. Now we have this opportunity to really look at schools being built and other more inclusive ways to build our community. And I think what we have to look at is that there's something great that has to come out of this beyond this ordinance, and I think that maybe the school bomb measure coming up might be a point of doing that. As a point of reference, 1580, which I'm involved in both as a consultant and a Greenpoint Raider, is almost done, and the 75 points are actually pretty easy to obtain. It's not a high threshold, and I really tried to ferret out the exact cost, being involved with the financing and the ongoing costs of the project, and it's not significant. The numbers that have been described are accurate, and they're well worth what it brings to the project. With regard to the dollar per square foot, I think on smaller projects, that's true, as you go up, it's substantially less. So, anyway, I think staff did a great job, they moved quickly, and I urge you to pass this this evening. Thank you.
Mark Green and Suzanne Emerson, last speaker card I have.
Hello, my name is Mark Green. I'm managing partner of Greenmark LLC, a commercial property owner in San Carlos. I'm also a former commissioner of the Economic Development Advisory Commission for a number of years. As a commercial property owner in San Carlos, I, as a point of contention, I was not notified or invited to a stakeholders' meeting. This is actually the first I've heard about this proposed ordinance. The staff report, as indicated by the questions of the council, evidently does not include any fiscal implications for commercial property owners in any of the matrix categories of the proposed ordinance. If a goal is of San Carlos, which I understand it is, is to attract new business and encourage enhancements to commercial properties, why would San Carlos want to impose more requirements for green building than the state of California? So, to follow up and conclude, I recommend that the ordinance be reviewed by EDAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, last speaker.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos. I am a Greenpoint Raider. I'd like to begin by thanking the building department for holding the stakeholders' meetings and incorporating their comments and suggestions into this proposal. I do support this proposal. I'd like to clarify the question of the difference between an official rating and an informal verification, and the difference in the cost and the implications. Some are used by some of the municipalities that have green building ordinances locally, and some are used by others. So both are being utilized here within San Mateo County by different municipalities. An official rating would require that an independent third party who has the proper qualifications, so for instance, a Greenpoint Raider who does not have a financial stake in the project, goes through the process of verifying and documenting each of the different elements that that project is seeking to achieve, files a rating application with Build It Green, along with $400. Build It Green then has a quality assurance process it goes through. And if they are satisfied that the application is sufficiently complete, then Build It Green issues the certification. That type of program is the one utilized, for instance, by unincorporated San Mateo County and Palo Alto and various of the other municipalities. In contrast, City of San Mateo, Burlingame, I believe, possibly Redwood City, uses programs where they allow an informal verification. So usually, it's still required to be by an independent third party, although I think in Redwood City, they might allow the designer themselves to do the verification. They still are required to verify the elements, and then at the end of the project, they sign off saying that the project complies with the standards of Greenpoint or LEED. It's not submitted to Build It Green or the USGBC, and you save that $400 for Build It Green's verification and oversight, and the certain amount of money, I don't know, for USGBC. When the stakeholders were discussing When the stakeholders were discussing the different options, do we want third-party verification through Build It Green and USGBC? Do we just want it being done less formally in order to save those $400? The decision was made on this matrix that you see to go with the version that doesn't include the $400 to Build It Green. Does that walk us down the road towards less verification, less oversight, quality control? Yes, it does. But that was, that was a decision that was made in order to make this a more economically acceptable proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you think of your question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to report that the beta amyloid levels in my brain managed to drop enough so I remembered my question. Thank you, Mr. Valley.
Mr. Valley, do you still want to take questions? Go ahead, Mr. Olbert.
Yeah, right, I'll forget it again, what are you trying to do? Here's the thing I wanted to follow up on, just to make sure I understood. When you were talking to the mayor, you made a comment that I interpreted as if we were to jump in a time machine and move some years forward, because of the direction that the state is going with Cal Green, that we could end up, we could end up in a situation where essentially we would be, builders would essentially be required to do things that are even in excess of what we are currently contemplating in terms of resource utilization efficiency being green.
Quite possibly, yes.
And, okay, so there is a possibility of that. And care to put some odds on it? Do you think that's likely to happen?
Well, I think one example of that is the zero net efficiency goal that the state has where a typical single-family residence will need to produce the same amount of energy it uses by 2020. So how that's going to happen, we don't know yet. But that's kind of the lengths that the state is taking.
So in that, so what that says to me is that there is a possibility, perhaps even a likelihood, that in the not-too-distant future, if we adopt, and again, we can come back and change this in the future, if we adopt something like this that has these third-party costs associated with it, the value of those third-party costs may be essentially zero. We may be, we could be forcing people to pay for certification, which is in a sense irrelevant because they're going to, they're going to have to meet the standard anyway through some other mechanism as defined by, by Cal Green. I made that as an unconditional statement. I'm trying to understand whether you think, whether I've got it correct and whether you think that's a possibility.
I think that the state, the discussion we're having right now on whatever the date is, August 27th, 2012, I think that by, based upon what I see the state doing, what everyone else sees the state doing, is we're going to exceed everything here within, by 2020. That's based upon what I'm reading, where the state's going and their goals, that's, that's what I would assume.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others while I'm up here?
Just if I could, Mr. Mayor, but just to follow up on Mr. Olbert's comments, it seems to me though that even though there would be these zero net energy production requirements in 2020, those would apply to new construction and remodels, right? So the money that someone would spend today, they wouldn't have to re-spend it, right?
It's not going to necessarily be, no, it's not something that would be retroactive. It would be to new, new development, yes.
So the money spent today is going to be worthwhile, you're going to get the savings, and if they keep tightening up the regulations, they're going to apply to new construction or remodels.
Yes.
Okay, just, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if we follow our procedure, is that appropriate?
Sure.
Make a motion to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 1504, Section 1504, Point 125, San Carlos Green Ordinance to Include Green Point and Lead Standards. But I would add on that we adjust it, that it cannot, you can't do your own, whatever words you want to use or whatever legalities is that you have to get an outside third party as opposed to, even if you're qualified, you have to get an outside third party. That's my motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just wondering if the third-party verification is what we need or if doing what Ms. Emerson was mentioning, having the, what is it, the certification through Build It Green or through the other organizations.
However it's written in the ordinance is how I'll go along, however it goes, but it's got to be, to my mind, it's got to be an outside person. So I don't, I don't know whether it's expensive or not expensive, I'm not into that. The whole third-party requirement that it be an outside person, quote unquote, is not specifically addressed in the ordinance, but if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like it specifically addressed in the ordinance.
Yes, because to me, it's an inside job otherwise.
Not necessarily to Cal Green though.
No, not, I don't, I don't speak to that. I don't, I don't, I assume that's already in here, I didn't read every line of this. I assume it's in here and it's, however it is, that's how staff takes care of it. Whether they require that or not, to me, that's a staff situation.
Rubens has a question or clarification.
I'm just, in the interest of being, trying to be specific, I think on page, at 15.04. 125F, it talks about the procedure, and we might be able to just add the word independent before qualified green building professional, and then independent before the Lead AP. I just want to, I want to be specific enough since we're introducing.
Wherever you found that, and I can't find what you're speaking about because I can't find, you said F, I have F, and I don't know where else you're speaking.
It's on the, under subdivision C on the, near the top of the page, there's an underlying paragraph where it begins, "A permit applicant is required to submit documentation."
Already behind you, I can't find, I'm looking at F at the bottom of the page, 15.04.125. So where are you? G?
Go to the next page, top of the next page.
I don't know where he is.
It's the second to the last page. Oh, no.
Sarah, find it for me.
The third to the last.
Third to the last page.
H, G, Q, R, bingo.
It's 15, mandatory standard for green building compliance for non-residential projects. That's one of them.
Right, I see that. Where would you like the independent word?
I'm just putting it where it says on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8th line, it says "a qualified green building professional." I was proposing we add the word independent.
Again, I apologize, 8th line on the next page.
The large paragraph. The underlying paragraph.
Yeah, the large paragraph at the top of the next page.
Says "a permit applicant."
Yeah, that's the, that's the beginning.
Where would you like the independent word?
On the 8th line before qualified green building professional, we could say independent.
Heard by independent qualified green professional. Okay.
So I'll look through the ordinance to find, make sure it covers all those situations and add the word independent.
Introducing the ordinance anyways.
Yeah, we're introducing the ordinance, so fortunately we can change, we can do all that.
We could do it while we're introducing it.
It looks like it would need to be in two places because that paragraph is specifically for non-residential.
And maybe some other places. The city attorney will fix that. So anyway, that's, that's the motion that I would make, independent, wherever it needs to be appropriate.
I just wanted to say, I, obviously for seconding this motion, I, I support staff's recommendation, but I am a little concerned, as I've expressed to Mr. Malpe previously, I'm a little concerned about essentially requiring third-party involvement here. And again, it's, please, I want the audience to understand, it's nothing against the Lead organization or the Green Point organization or Green Point Raiders or Lead certifiers or what have you. But there's a part of me that feels that if this is going to be a requirement for government approval, local approval of projects, which it will be, that we ought not, somehow that ought to be internal to the process. Yes, we may charge fees for it, but it ought not to be required that we send people out to, to pay money to third parties.
If I may, you're the one that, you're one of the council members that brought this forward, I believe, is that right?
You mean, you're going back to in March?
Yeah, what, what, how did this end up on the dais? I think it was because you and another council member raised the issue?
Yes.
So what were you looking at for at the time?
Well, at the time, I, when I went back and re-looked at the video, what I was looking for was some mechanism that we would use internally, okay?
Internally?
Yeah. And the way I look at this, Mr. Mayor, is that effectively, in order to provide people with the flexibility of implementing their solution to our statement or our requirement saying we want a higher level of building efficiency, being more green, the trade-off for that at the current point in time anyway is that we have to use an outside organization. From Mr. Valley's comments, it sounds to me like by 2020, that may no longer be an issue. There may be some point at which in the next few years, we, we or our successors come back and say, we're going to change this matrix again.
The only outside organization is going to be that, usually the lead on a project, whether it's new construction or whatever, is the architect or the building designer. So the building designer is going to have to go out and hire another consultant, just like they do now. They have to go out and hire a structural engineer, they have to go out and hire someone that does Title 24, they have to go out and hire someone that does landscape architecture if that's part of the project, et cetera, et cetera, civil engineer, you name it. Now they're going to have to go out and hire someone who does a Green Point system, Lead certification for their project, and it's going to add about 3,000, 4,000, on a residential project is what I'm reading, is $3,000 to $4,000 to the cost of the construction drawings and documents that you turn in to the building department.
Yep, that's my understanding.
That's what's going to happen. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, with the, with the list of other professionals that would be retained on a project, excuse me, how many of those are required by some kind of regulations versus being?
All of them.
All of them.
They are? Okay, thank you.
Depending on scope of the work. Another, another one that I didn't mention is, and we've done this by ordinance in this city, is similar to, the language that's in here about what's a major reconstruction is very similar to what the city already uses to apply to fire sprinklers. And if you hit that, then you've got to go hire someone to design the fire sprinklers and install them. Similar kind of cost to what, what this Lead certification is. When you guys are done, I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot at this. I am strongly opposed to this, and I'm going to give you my reasons why. If we're going to have a discussion, I'm going to give the reasons why I think you should vote against this. So if you're, if I don't hear any more discussion, I'm going to give it to you.
Let's hear your comments now.
Okay. My comments are, first, I'm going to run through some of these, the comments from the public about lowering the cost of energy bills, higher value to the property, 10 times initial investment, value of green label in California housing market adds 9%. All these things, in a free market economy, that's the choice of the building owner, the homeowner, the developer, et cetera. If they want that label and they want to get the extra value to their property for it, have at it. It's a free country, at least it used to be. I don't think it's our business to be telling people, this is how they ought to do their construction. It has nothing to do with, you know, Mr. Valley's department primarily is dealing with life and safety issues. Same thing with the Public Works Department, the things that they're dealing with, when you're hooking up your sewer to the street and they do their inspections, they want to make sure that's safe, clean, it's going to stay there in the ground, and we're not going to have sewage in the streets. That's what all this is about. Initially, that's why they wrote the California Building Code and added to it over the years. You can ask Mr. Valley, he's got a copy of the 1920 version in his office, it's about three-quarters of an inch, half an inch thick, and he likes to show you what we have now, and it takes up about three feet of, of space on a bookshelf. So what we're doing here is we're adding, you know, another book probably in the future for this kind of thing. Folks talked about, well, it's only 1% of the cost of the, you know, when the project's all done. That may be true, but I can tell you, because I'm in the business, when, when you initiate a project and you start going through it and, you know, especially for homeowners, I don't know about commercial development because I don't deal with that, but when you sit down with a homeowner at their kitchen table and they say, I want to add a couple of bedrooms, and then you as the designer have to say, okay, if you go this large and you develop this much or redevelop this much of your property, you're going to have fire sprinklers, you're going to have, you know, the Title 24 standards, now the Lead standards, all these things, and it's, and each one of those is going to be a consultant and it's going to cost you money. They start to question whether they should go forward with their project. And we have other things in the city too. I mean, we've got, the schools have their school impact fees, the City of San Carlos has our park, park impact fees. I mean, I've been on this council long enough to watch these little, and every, each time, oh, it's a, it's the cost of a cup of coffee every day. Little arguments like that, it's not that much, it's a small percentage. It all adds up. And you, and if we keep doing things like this, what ends up happening is you slow down the market and people think twice about what they're going to do. Or people like, that are in my position, you have to, you know, adjust your cost, or my engineer has to adjust his cost, because we all have to, we want to keep the economy moving and the market going, these things have to be affordable. So as you add the regulation and add to the cost, things have to break somewhere. So that's why, that's why I'm opposed to it on that market basis. I also think there's enough going on here coming down the pike with the state that we wouldn't, we don't have to do anything, and in a year and a half, the state's going to do it for us. So, you know, I, I just see, I don't see any reason for us to get ahead of what's coming down the pike anyways from the state. I think we could just, we could do just as well to wait. And the last thing I'm going to say here is, I don't know if any of you saw this, but there was a very quiet thing that came out in the news. We are down to the 1990 levels of greenhouse gases in this country because of the reduction in the use of coal for the creation of electricity and the conversion to natural gas. So all this stuff that we're doing to cut down on, you know, greenhouse gases, it's been done for us already, simply with the change of fuel that we use for electric power plants. So I don't see much reason to go down this road.
So, Mr. Mayor, when you were talking about the cost, so you're, were you primarily looking at the additional cost of the, the fees for the additional professional help or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you look at it in terms of the whole.
It's not the building improvement.
Right, if you look at the whole project, when everything's all said and done, you know, all the fees are a small amount. But when you look at the professional cost to get a project through the building department, there's that cost, there's also the professional cost to get it through the planning department in most cities too, because these days it's mostly a separate deal. But when you look at that total package, these, all these things start to add up, and when you look at it that way, $3,500, that's about what my engineers charges for doing engineering on a lot of projects. So it's comparable. It's a hefty cost. Those are my arguments for voting against this ordinance. What I'd rather see, and if I could propose something, is because this is coming down the pike, what I'd rather see us do is, and this is maybe more in line with, with what Mr. Olbert was thinking originally, is that we have this and, and take people through it as part of the process when they come in, we ask them to, you know, give them, and some cities do this, I go into some cities and they give you a checklist and say, we're not really doing this, but we want you to start getting used to it, so go ahead and, you know, we'll give you this paperwork, you can score your project and go through and look at it and so forth. But they're not requiring it. They're just, you know, giving people a heads up that it's coming down the pike and they, so they'll, they'll give you this stuff. And I'd rather see us do that and get everybody prepared for 2014, 2020. And by the way, a closing note on 2020, my estimation, my opinion what's going to happen, no one's going to be able to do it, and that's not going to be the goal really. The goal is going to be, if you can't do it, it's just like companies trading greenhouse gas certificates, right? What it's going to end up being is, oh, you can't meet the standard? Fine, you pay a fine, you pay a fee, you pay a tax, something. That's what will end up happening.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're suggesting that this just be an advisory vote?
Right.
Do you know of any other municipalities that are doing that or have done it?
There are some, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but there are cities that have put this stuff out and, you know, make it available to the public, to the people that come in, but they're not applying it.
And your whole line of thinking is basically this is going to be obsolete in a couple of years because the state's going to come in and redraw everything? of years, because the state's going to come in and redraw everything?
That's right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could we vote on the motion I made?
We could, yeah. Y'all ready to vote? Like the judges on the-
Was the motion seconded?
Yes.
It was, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I zoned out on that, so.
Are you in the same, as Mark?
It must be being on the ends, or?
Yeah, yeah, there's something about the air, if we could get a little bit more oxygen or something.
It is hot in here. Ms. Bowen.
Councilmember Clapper?
No.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olber?
Yes.
Mayor Grokka?
No.
Okay, thank you. I like this process, by the way, it's helpful.
I would just like to note that my reason for voting against that is for the third-party verification. I am in complete support of how it was presented, but I don't believe that third-party verification is required.
You mean an independent one, or?
Yes, independent.
Independent, yeah, okay.
Yes, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
All right, item 10B.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a one-year salary and benefit resolution tentatively agreed to by the management group. This group is comprised of 19 budgeted positions and includes department directors, division managers, and other exempt professional positions, including the senior accountants, senior engineer, and the senior management analyst. The resolution before you includes a 2% increase in base salary for a one-year term. This is the first time since 2008 that a salary increase is being considered by the council. Just to go back in history a little bit, in July of 2008, the management union reduced salaries and benefits, saving $208,000 by eliminating the Pay for Performance Bonus Program, eliminating the Management Development and Job-Related Procurements Program, opened the second retirement tier for new hires as of January 1, 2009, eliminated the longevity recognition for new hires after July 1, 2009. Following that, in March 2010, this unit agreed to further salary and benefit reductions, saving $114,000. This was the elimination of the 2.75% COLA that was scheduled for July 1, 2010. In June 2010, this unit agreed to further concessions totaling 5% of total compensation, equating to about $246,000. This included a 1.5% reduction in base salary, reduction in float hours from 40 to 24 per year, eliminated the vacation payout except upon separation of employment, and capped the vacation accrual at a maximum of two years. It changed the medical benefit where the employee would pay any premium increase, up to 5%. Established another tier for retirement, and eliminated the city's deferred compensation contribution into the 401A plan. So, the resolution before you tonight has a total fiscal impact of $64,900. A summary of the key components are a one-year term beginning July 1, 2012, ending June 30, 2013, an increase in base wage of 2% effective July 1. The employees will continue to pick up the first 5% of medical increases. It establishes the third, the effective date of that third retirement tier as April 23, 2012, so for any new employees hired after that date, they are now in the third retirement tier. And it includes language where this unit will receive any increment between the wage or benefit increase provided to this unit and the larger wage or benefit increase provided to absentee teamsters of the confidential units. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Yes.
Very good, go ahead.
I need some help understanding the, it's on the first page under the summary of items, you list at number three, the Section 125 Flex Plan Contribution.
Uh huh.
And maybe if you can give me an example, I'm just having a hard time following what is going to increase by 3.4%.
So, this is the medical contribution, this is the portion that's pre-taxed, and for this year, for 2013, the medical increase on average is going up 8.47%. So it used to be that the city would pick up the majority of that, now the employees pay the first 5%, and the city will pay the 3.47%.
Okay, so the city's costs are increasing?
Yes.
Above what they were previously?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I wasn't completely clear on. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Ms. Mendenhall, I think I know the answer to this question, but just to get it on the record, anyway, how does the, how does what's being proposed here to relate, how does it relate to the budget we adopted for 2012, 2013?
There's no change to the budget, there were some assumptions built into the budget that you adopted in June.
Thank you.
I have a question on that, because when we adopted the budget, we also adopted economic policy, and if I understood the reading of that economic policy, it said that we were not supposed to make a budget based on assumptions of these kinds of things, and yet we're doing it.
I believe we discussed that at the time of the budget adoption, and it was, it was decided that we wanted to put some kind of a, an estimate as to cost increases. Some of the cost increases in there are also PERS cost increases, where since we have a two-year budget, we're making assumptions related to those. So this is related to the assumptions and built into the base budget.
How could we do that when we adopted a, that's what I'm saying, we adopted a policy, economic policy with the budget, it was the second document, and it says in that policy that we can't make assumptions on expenses like that when we're building our budget, and yet we did it.
There's assumptions built into the budget for a number of expenses that we don't have the exact dollar amounts for. For example, professional services, operating expenses, we make assumptions that those will increase based on 2%, whether they do or not, it's unknown at the time. We did add specific language in the personnel summary at the back of the budget that explained that any changes regarding any compensation would be brought forward to you at a separate date.
I don't know, it just seems odd to me that we adopt an economic policy and then turn around and ignore it. What's the point of adopting the policy?
If I may ask, Ms. Mendenhall, I'm just a little bit confused, are we talking about our budgetary adoption practices or this item?
Well, it does relate to this item, because you asked the question, and it relates to this item in this sense, that it sets up the council, when you, in my opinion anyways, it sets up the council to put those assumptions in the budget, and then when we get into discussions about these kinds of things, it colors the information that we're given and that we have, and our thinking on it.
Well, I suppose, one of the things I was going to ask, I would love to continue this discussion, actually in a broader sense, about how we do our financial forecasting and whatnot, but I don't know that it really relates directly to this.
Sure, okay, carry on.
Maybe this is something, something we can talk about on Thursday?
Yes.
Thursday, throw it up again.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
I won't tag on your questions anymore, sorry.
No, no, feel free.
I just, I just have one.
Mr. Comments?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Mendenhall, I'm just curious about the VIBA, the voluntary employee benefit. This is a program where they contribute $200 a year of their vacation accrual, and it goes into an account?
Yes.
And the account earns, what, do they get to choose investment options, is it just going to a fixed account earning interest? How does that work?
They get to choose the investment options, it's managed by Nationwide, that was, the contract with Nationwide was on the consent calendar earlier tonight that you have approved. There's no cost to the city to run the VIBA program.
And the employee has the option of doing this, you say? Is it basically from unused vacation time?
The employee, it's done by a group, so any employee in the management group, it would apply to all of them that were hired after that, that date.
Okay.
I think it's January 1, 2009.
And I noticed that it's on a pre-tax basis, so.
Correct.
That's good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few, but I'm waiting to see where y'all are. Ms. Clapper, any questions?
Not right now, no, please proceed with your questions.
Okay. So, looking at the salary and benefit resolution, one of the things it talks about in here is overtime, and of course, they're exempt, but it says, "When a member of the management group has an absence from work for less than a full day, this time shall not be charged for their leave balances." So, can you explain that a little bit? That means what if you come into work and you're here a couple hours, not you, but I mean, you know, an employee in the management group? Say you come into work for a couple hours, or you're here half the day, or something like that, and then you go home sick, it doesn't count against your sick time, or any of those kinds of things, is that what that's saying?
The exempt employees are, though in my nature of being exempt, you're paid to work at your position, you're not paid hourly, so whether you're here, like as of today, you know, whether we're here for 12 hours, 14 hours, or if we're work seven hours one day, there's no change, because it's not compensated by an hourly rate.
Okay, I can understand that, but what I'm trying to understand, on the flip side of that coin, is there, you do get sick leave, you do get vacation time, family bereavement time, so on and so forth, so, yeah.
Through the mayor, I can shed a little bit of light on this.
All right.
This language has been in the MOU for a number of years now, and my understanding is it relates back to an old court case, which may or may not be in effect anymore, that dealt with at-will employment and the fact that at-will employees are salaried employees, they're not paid on an hourly basis, and so you couldn't, at the time, charge those hours. We'd have to go back and look and make sure that that, that the law hasn't changed and evolved since then, but this is sort of legacy language that relates to a legal issue, a specific legal issue.
Well, you see what I'm saying about the flip side of it.
I understand completely where you're coming from.
Yeah, so, you know, if you come in for half the day, if you come in, you know, for a couple hours, and then say, "You know, I'm going to go to my kid's baseball game today," and then you're not there at work, I don't know, seems like, if you did that, you know, often enough, you'd, well, yeah.
And through the chair, I mean, I think that's, but I think that's exactly the point about an exempt employee. I mean, I know that was the status I was in in most of my private sector jobs, and those exact situations happened. There were, there were times when I came in for part of the day and I went to my kid's graduation. And different companies have different cultures about how they handle that, the only ones I ever chose to work at, they basically were, "You need to get your work done. You need to get your work done, you need to be able to interact with the other employees that you need to have to interact with, so we don't necessarily want you doing all your work in the middle of the night, because you can't talk to anybody else." But it isn't, it is not an hourly process, there's not a punchline.
And yet, in your positions, you did have vacation accrual, of course?
Yes.
Holidays?
Yes.
Sick leave?
All of those.
Vacation, all those things, yeah.
And it does, I mean, it does raise an interesting question, particularly about sick leave.
Right.
You know, there were some days when I or another employee would come in, and we'd go home partway through the day, because we were just deathly ill.
Yeah.
But we had come in, because we had to get something done. And I actually don't remember how that was accounted for, it may or may not have been accounted as a sick day, but yeah, those kind of issues, those gray areas kind of come up, it's just inherent in being an exempt employee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was, have experienced the same thing professionally myself, in terms of how my time was handled. The one thing I do note that's different from what is usually, the way it's handled in the private sector, is on the next page, item number four, administrative leave, where there's 80 hours of additional time. So even though we're saying it's salaried, there is no payment on an hourly basis, yet now we are saying there is payment on an hourly basis for 80 hours of this administrative leave. So that, to me, kind of makes it a little bit different than the examples that we're offering from the private sector. So that's, that's something that I think is somewhat standard in municipal governments to offer, offer that kind of administrative leave, you know, whether that's something that will last, you know, over the coming years, is a subject of speculation, but it does make it a little, a little bit different in that regard.
Through, through the chair, if I may, just, what is an example of administrative leave?
It's additional float time, time off.
Okay, but I guess what I meant, Ms. Mendenhall, is just typically, how is it used?
It's used as a float day.
Yep.
Oh, I see, okay.
My, my understanding is, in many municipal government situations, it's used in recognition of time exactly like this evening, where your staff is exceeding a normal workday in order to be able to conduct city business at evening meetings, whether it's for council or commission. So that's why I say it differs, because in our professional life, if, you know, I was working in, out of town in Denver for 10 or 12 hours, it didn't matter how many hours I worked, I was, like you said, I was just getting the job done. So this is, kind of paints it in a slightly different perspective.
I'm actually glad we had this little bit of discussion, because our experiences may differ, but I used to run, in part of my career, a bunch of budget operations, and budget operations inherently, there, I mean, it was a rare year when we weren't working until 4:00 in the morning, and having to get up at 6:00 and start over again. And we always, in all the companies I work with, we always basically told people, "You want to take a few days off afterwards, go ahead and do it, doesn't count," we just, just looked the other way.
Hey, let's reel it in a little bit here, because these are questions, and we're getting into discussion here, and so. I do have a question about float time, which comes under entitlement, and I didn't quite understand it, because it says, "In addition to the above," which is, the above is the vacation accrual rate, "management group employees shall be granted 24 hours of float time each year at an agreeable, agreeable to the department head." So does that mean that that's another three days that you can add to your vacation, or is that three more days of vacation time?
Three more days of any kind.
It says three more days, yes. But it's been reduced from what it was two years ago.
Okay.
It was five days.
But it's another three days, okay.
Through the, through the mayor, if I may, those were former paid holidays that the city wanted to, and the employees agreed to convert from fixed holidays where the city would close, to floating days off, so the city would remain open.
And then, under holiday enclosures, I had a question, because it appears as though, well, let me ask the question. It says, "The city manager may designate up to five specific workdays in each calendar year between Christmas and New Year's, during which employees may be required to take time off." And that was always my impression, that, you know, we did that as a budgetary matter, but it seems like that the employee could turn around, and for instance, you guys were asking about administrative leave, you could say, "Okay, the city managers said I am not to be at work on, you know, between New Year's Eve and the 3rd of January, for instance, and it's an unpaid holiday." The, of course, we see here that Christmas is paid, and Thanksgiving Day is, you know, those kind of days are paid, but for instance, December 25 is a paid holiday, but the time between Christmas and New Year's, where the city manager's saying, "We're closing City Hall, because that's what the council wanted, they want this furlough to save money," the employee, if they're in management, can turn around and say, "You know what, I'm going to charge, I'm still going to get paid, because I want to count those 10 days of administrative leave and still get paid, so my paycheck doesn't look any different. That's when I take my 10 days administrative leave." Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
The holiday furlough is used to reduce the accrual balances on the balance sheet.
Yeah, I know that.
Everyone is required to use their paid time, or, not required, but it's, they can use their vacation time against those days.
Okay, so then, so then they do get paid, because they get paid for these other days?
Use up their other days.
They get paid for administrative leave, they get paid for holidays, they get paid for vacation. So in some way, shape, or form, an employee can look at, "Okay, I've got 10 days administrative leave, and I've got some vacation time, I've got some sick time, I could charge that against what the city manager's doing, and therefore my paycheck doesn't go any lower." Right? Okay, just wanted to be clear on that, understand it. See if I, oh, one of the questions I had, I think I had two more, if I may. Where it says that- questions I had, I think I had two more, if I may. Where it says that pay for temporary appointment to a higher classification, so basically what it's saying is, if you get put in a higher classification than what you're in, that has a higher pay scale than what you're in, if you're there for five days, you get paid as that position, or, or just a, oh, 5% above your regular pay. So you get a little bonus for being in that position for five days. And it includes holidays. I didn't quite get that, how if, you know, I guess if you were put in that position before the holiday, and then you are in that position, you know, a couple of days after the holiday, that you get paid for the holiday at that higher rate as well. And I'm curious if that's the case. Do I understand that correctly? And my other question is, how much does that get used, where you actually get put in a, you know, a position for five days?
Most of the time when it's used, it's for acting directors. So the department directors are out of the office.
Right.
To keep business functioning is normal, they may appoint an acting director. They have to be in that position five days or more, or after the fifth day, they get paid for that.
For the?
The acting pay, it's.
So they get paid for the sixth day on, or they get paid for all those five days?
Have to be in the acting capacity for more than five days.
Got that.
And then they would get paid for those five days as well.
Okay, how often does that get used?
Depends on the, the vacation schedules the department has. So.
I'd say six to eight times a year.
Six to eight times a year, it gets used? Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you. All right.
I was, maybe somebody in the public might want us, I don't know.
I don't have any speaker cards on this. Anybody in the public?
If, seeing that, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012 dash?
Fifty.
Fifty. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the salary and benefit resolution between the City of San Carlos and the management unit.
Second. Discussion?
No.
It's hard to discuss, because we obviously discussed this in closed session. I'm gonna explain something here, because I'm gonna vote no on this. And the reason I'm going to, number one, we didn't have this detail in closed session, we just had what the employees wanted to negotiate on, those items, not the whole MOU. And reading through this, as it is in our packet, there's things that bother me. One is, was raised by Ms. Clapper about the administrative leave. That's 80 hours, that's two weeks, or 10 days. And if I add up all these days, I don't, I don't see someone necessarily doing this, but if I add up all the days of 10 days administrative leave, 10 days for holidays, on the medium, or the median, 20 days for vacation, it's based on length of service, so, you know, first year, you just get 12 days, and after 19 years, you get 25. But anyways, plus the three days for float, plus another 12 days after your first year of sick leave that you can put in the bank, and I ostensibly use, plus another six days for family sick leave, all adds up to 60 days. Seems like a lot of time. I can't imagine anybody taking that much time off, but on the other hand, you know, I've worked for companies where, of course, you get sick leave, you get vacation, you can accrue so much, and so forth. And I remember even my wife, when she worked for Kelly Moore, and she got in a situation where she had to use some of her, I forget what it was, like she had vacation, she was sick, and she had to use some of her vacation time for, against her sick leave, because, you know, she ran out of one and had to go use the other. I don't see that happening here at all. I see quite a few days. 60 days seems like a lot to me. And there are other things. I'm not gonna go into all the detail because of the, the time here, but it's frustrating to me that, to know that we negotiated, just based on what the employees wanted to look at, and we didn't have in closed session, this whole MOU to look through it, discuss it, talk as a council, and say, you know, we wanna push back a little bit on, you know, maybe on administrative leave, we wanna suggest to these employees, we wanna cut that down from 10 days to five, you know? We couldn't do any of that. The auto mileage, I'm a little bothered by. I can see it for some employees, it would make sense, but for others, I don't know why they wouldn't just do an expense report when they need mileage. That's a pretty small matter, but it's, to me, it's the principle. So there's some things in here that I'm bothered with. I wouldn't have agreed to having the MOU look like this in the end, and so there it is. So I'm gonna vote no.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, you had the packet. You've had it for, since last Wednesday.
Yeah, I know.
You could have brought it to the meeting, right?
No, 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 we didn't have this in closed session. When we met in closed session, we did not have this detail.
You're not talking about tonight?
No, not tonight.
No, no, I'm not, yeah, tonight, right. It was water under the bridge at that point.
I understand.
So a simple fix to that is have the MOU when we're in closed session, so we can discuss all the items, and not just what is being presented to us. So, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Clapper? Yes. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Uh, no. Brings us to item 10C, which is very similar but different.
Yes, so the, the second item before you tonight is for the confidential unit. This is a one-year salary and benefit resolution, tentatively agreed to by them. This group is comprised of seven budgeted positions, and includes administrative assistants, the executive assistant, and the HR management analyst. The resolution before you includes a 2% increase in base salary for a one-year term. Similar to the management group, this is the first time since 2008 that a salary increase is being considered by council. Similar to what management did, and we just go back a little bit in history, in July 2008, the confidential unit reduced salaries and benefits by $10,000, eliminating the pay-for-performance bonus feature. We opened a second retirement tier, and we eliminated the longevity recognition program. In March of 2010, this unit agreed to further salary and benefit reductions, saving $23,000 by eliminating the 2.75% COLA that was scheduled for July 1st, 2010. In June 2010, this unit agreed to further concessions totaling 5% of their total comp, or approximately $49,000. This included a 2.5% reduction in base wages. It eliminated the vacation payout, except upon separation of employment, and cap vacation accrual at a maximum of two years. So if they, if they don't use all their vacation, they no longer accrue it, they stop accruing it. Similar to the management group. We changed the medical benefit, where again, the employee would pay the premium up to the first 5%, and the city would be responsible for any premium increase above that. We established a third tier for retirement, and we eliminated the city's deferred compensation contribution. The resolution before you tonight, the fiscal impact is totals about $13,000. The key components are, it's a one-year term, commencing on July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013. It includes an increase in base wage of 2%. Similar to the management group, the employees pick up the first 5% of the medical increases, so the employees are picking up 5%, the city's picking up 3.47%. It established the third tier date, the effective date for PERS, as of April 23rd, 2012. And it includes the same language, where this unit will receive any increment between the wage or benefit increase provided to this unit, and the larger wage or benefit increase provided to AFSMI, Teamsters, or the management unit. And one little housekeeping item, on the last page of the resolution, the paragraph directly following the bullet points, the word "management" needs to be replaced with "confidential", and then we need to insert "management group" after AFSMI and/or Teamsters. So it's like the last bullet. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions on this one?
No.
No?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2012 dash 51.
Fifty-one.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the salary and benefit resolution between the City of San Carlos and, and the confidential group, as revised by Ms. Mendenhall's comments, to correct the typographical errors.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Okay, I'm just gonna make one more comment, because I'm gonna vote no on this one also. And I'm not gonna go over the same material, because it would be redundant. But I did wanna, I, I pulled this out of the paper, I read this the other day, says, the title is, "New Job, Lesser Pay. Most laid-off workers take cuts in salary as they rejoin the workforce." And I'm not gonna, obviously, read the article, but it went into detail about this. I, I just want our employees to know, you know, we talk about, well, we do this to keep people happy, and, and to say to them, thank you, and so forth. I don't wanna get, give our employees the idea that the mayor doesn't appreciate their work. I do. But I also am very aware of the economy we're in, and I can tell you, you know, a lot of times, I go by feel up here, in my own life experience, in this week, or actually over the last month, in my business, I've seen two guys go out of business, contractors. One guy managed to get himself a job doing something else that he had done earlier in his life, and the other guy packed his bags, sold his house, moved his wife and family to Idaho. These are things that are going on. It's a real world out there, and people are suffering. So, yes, I wanna say thank you to the employees, but at the same time, I understand the market and the world we live in. I, I live it every day, because I'm still out there, you know, trying to make my business work, and so forth. And so I think I take, and I don't wanna speak for others, or, you know, mind their experience or their perspective, but I'm just giving a little color to what my perspective on things is, and why I vote the way I do on these things. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I, I understand what you're saying, but the way I see it is, I think you have to separate personal self-employment and income history from, you know, a city that has efficiently managed its resources. And I'd like to add that, you know, there's some language in here that there's a 2% increase. I, I take issue with the word "increase," right? It's a, to me, it's a 2% restoration. These people took a 5% pay cut. But again, this is a city that has efficiently managed its resources, and I think we have to maintain a reasonable level of compensation. So that's the only thing I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. We ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Councilmember Clapper? Yes. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Uh, no. And that brings us to item 10D, us acting as successor agency to the RDA, adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for the period January 1 through January 30th, 2013, otherwise known as ROPS. Are we gonna have to do this like every six months or something, or what?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Talk about need a pay raise. Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The City of San Carlos, acting as the successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, may only pay obligations listed on a valid recognized obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as a ROPS. Payments for obligations on the approved ROPS for the period of January to June 2013, otherwise known as ROPS III, are to be paid from existing reserve balances and additional property tax increment, expected to be received from the county controller by January 2013. ROPS III includes $1,099,198 in recognized obligations, including $125,000 for successor agency administrative costs for the six-month period. In addition, ROPS III assumes there will be payments totaling approximately $6.3 million from reserve balances to three school districts in consideration of settlement of pending legal disputes. ROPS III was submitted by staff to the Oversight Board for approval at a special meeting scheduled on August 22nd, last Wednesday. The successor agency has a statutory deadline of September 1st, 2012, to submit an approved ROPS to the State Department of Finance for its subsequent review and approval. The DOF shall make its determination to approve the enforceable obligations, amounts, and funding sources no later than 45 days after submittal. The ROPS has been amended since the agenda packet was produced early last week. You should have been provided with a, with a slightly updated schedule. There, there are relatively minor changes. The settlement amounts shifted a little bit for each of the school districts, and increased by $42,000, so it's, it's 6.3 rather than the $6,258,000 that was in the schedule. And there was also an adjustment in, in a line item for total outstanding obligations for successor agency admin allowance, and those were, that was another item that the Oversight Board requested. They did approve this ROPS III by a resolution at the Oversight Board last Wednesday. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about specific line items, or the dissolution process in general. Staff recommends a resolution approving this ROPS III. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suiki. Any questions? Or you can ask Bob. He, I think, knows the details here, because he sits on the board for us, most times. Any questions?
No.
None? Thank you, Mr. Suiki. Okay, entertaining motion for this one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2012 dash 52. A resolution of the City of San Carlos, acting as the successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, adopting a recognized obligation payment schedule for the period January 1st through June 30th, 2013, in accordance with the provisions of Health and Safety Code Section 34177.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Clapper? Yes. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, we have to go backwards in our packet now, and deal with some things that we pulled off the consent calendar, and I'll deal with other, the things that other folks pulled first, and then my own. So, we had H, and I forgot who pulled that, but that was Mr. Olbert. Okay, go ahead.
In deference to the hour, I will be brief here. I am a little concerned about the investment policy. I've discussed this, my concerns with, with Mr. Malpe, prior to this meeting. Basically, what I'm concerned about is, first off, diversification in response to auditor, auditor comments, or audit comments, which involve us putting money into the county fund, in addition to the LAIF fund. That's arguably not really diversification. It may be diversification of manager, but it's not really financial diversification. More importantly, the, the thing that concerns me is, when you look at the differential between the yield being created by the county fund, and the yield being created by the LAIF, the state-run fund. The county fund generates about seven-tenths or eight-tenths of a percentage point more in income. Now, first off, your reaction might be, well, that's a good thing. But the problem is, that unless, if you assume that the managers of the two funds are equally competent about configuring their portfolio, which I frankly think is a reasonable assumption to make, then differences in yield automatically mean differences in risk. That's what risk versus return means. And so while you may have two funds whose managers say, oh, well, we're equally targeting preservation of principal and liquidity, if the yields are different, they aren't. And given the experience that, that many agencies throughout San Mateo County had, both the city and the local school districts, with the very substantial losses that occurred on the county portfolio because of their investment in Lehman, Lehman securities, I'm troubled by that, and personally would prefer that we either put all of our money into the LAIF fund, or at least look for some other fund whose risk versus return profile.
Timeout, if I may.
Yes.
I like where you're going, that you're challenging this. If it might be, I, I don't think we could do what I would like to see us do, because it's not on the agenda this way, but what we could look at, and you could bring it up under council reports and requests and so forth, where we get things on the agenda, is, you know, in the past, we've had a subcommittee of the council that looked at, for instance, how we did the budget. I think Bob and I believe Omar were on that at one time. We could have a subcommittee of the council, along with the, maybe the city treasurer and some of the staff, do a, a study on our investment policy, and make a recommendation to the council, and bring it back for consideration. But we can't take that tonight, but I throw that out there to just say, I hear you, maybe we could cut the discussion short right now, and address the matter in the future. Really, very near future.
Yeah, I would be, I'd be happy to see something like that take, take place. My reading-
Throw it out on, excuse me, I'm sorry, on the 30th, you know, with the retreat, you could throw it out there.
Yeah. That's certainly worth, worth considering. My reading of what we were doing, basically, by adopting the investment policy, was to confirm our practices and our policies as, as they relate to investments, which is why I was bringing it up here.
Sure.
Because I'm concerned about it, and wasn't sure I would necessarily want it-
But I don't, I don't think we're gonna change it- But I don't think we're going to change it tonight by, I mean, we could vote against it and really throw a wrench in the works, but I don't think that's probably going to happen. But what could happen is we give it some study and some consideration. I think it's long overdue. I don't disagree with you.
Mr. Mayor, couldn't you? Mr. Malpe, if we don't do anything, we could just say we're not going to vote up or down on this, couldn't we?
That's correct, yeah. I don't think there were any immediate consequences of not voting in support of this tonight and just continuing it into an action item. Conversely, there wouldn't really be, you know, we would continue to use the former policy as our guiding policy.
Right.
So there wouldn't be any, you know, there'd potentially be an upside in having a policy in place in terms of putting this item through, voting it up or down tonight, and then continuing on with a process where you want to bring it back for...
Which would you prefer?
I would prefer that you vote, that you go with the staff recommendation and adopt this tonight, and then if you'd like to study it further, that we could begin to do that.
We don't have to wait a year to change it.
No.
Okay.
I think the city treasurer would like to speak as well.
Mike Galvin, City Treasurer. The investment policy does not restrict us into one specific type of fund. If you take a look at the types of investments we can go into, it includes the LAIF, Local Agency Investment Fund, up to the maximum demand. It doesn't put a cap that we have to put, say, 50% into San Mateo County or 50% into LAIF. Therefore, I think the investment plan as it stands is okay. If the council wants some direction of trying to, of saying, "Well, we would prefer you going into, more into another area," it all falls within the authorized investment plan. And as far as yield, I think what you've got to keep in mind, it's the current times. For example, CalPERS, they earned a full whopping 1% last fiscal year. Surprisingly, CalSTRS earned 1.8%. Both of those are in substantial diversification, and it just shows you that you really can't earn a substantial interest rate at this current time. And one reason why we've kept it in primarily into the two funds is because of the RDA winding down, not knowing what the impact would be onto the city, the housing as a result of RDA, there's housing impacts, and the current interest rates. So I guess, you know, what I'm trying to say is that the investment policy is good as it stands. It's just, how do you want to invest the funds into those specific categories? Our concern, just like yours, is safety. As you're aware, if you look back in the city investment, the three-month study, we did get some money back from Lehman Brothers. I think October 1 was supposed to be getting some more money back from them. But we are concerned about the safety of the funds.
Do you like to, any further questions?
I'm happy to have the issue studied offline. Just so as not to surprise my colleagues, I'm going to vote against this.
Okay.
Simply because it actually does list the San Mateo County investment pool as one of the options, and given what I was talking about before, I just don't really think it ought to be there, given the way it's currently run.
Okay.
Could I ask you just a point of clarification, so that if we vote to adopt the resolution, we could go back tomorrow and...
Right.
Change it. Right?
That's correct.
All right. Maybe we ought to talk about.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a motion?
You may.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012-... The test.
Forty.
Excuse me?
Forty.
Forty, not 53?
We're going backwards because it's consent calendar.
Yeah, she left a placeholder.
Oh, placeholder, forty. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the City of San Carlos investment policy.
I second the motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay. Let's see. That brings us to item, are the rest of them the ones I brought up?
Okay.
That's correct.
AL.
Okay. Item K is adopt resolution authorizing additional payment to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. And I have one question for staff on this. It's, because what I'm looking for is a complete picture, and I don't think I'm going to get it tonight at this time, but we've been making adjustments. We made, excuse me, we made adjustments for overtime pay. We've made adjustments now for this. We've had other things, and I would really like to have an understanding of where we are on our annual, you know, right now, our cost for fire. And I don't, from reading the staff report and approving this item up or down, I don't see, I don't see that figure. So, I don't think you'll be able to pull it together tonight, but I'd like to have it. By the way, on these items, I should say to the council, I know we're encouraged to call ahead, but I was, I had a busy day and busy week. I'm really impacted with work and other things and didn't really have the time to be making phone calls to City Hall and discussing these items. But that's why I pulled this item, is because I'd like to see something like that.
And through the chair, you realize, this is old, this is for the old stuff, not for the new stuff?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
It's all fire in my book.
I understand, but it's still the old fire as opposed to the new fire.
I know.
Through the mayor, if I may, too. As part of the budget adoption process, we did go through those numbers as they related to that point in time. So we're really only a couple months into the fiscal year, this new fiscal year with the budget. So if the timeframe works for you, typically, we would report out on this in February with about six months of new data from the last time we reported. Otherwise, we'd basically be giving you the same report we just gave a couple months ago.
So if I pull out my budget book and then add this, because in the budget, there were things that were unknowns, right?
That's correct, and these are them.
Okay.
These are a lot of them.
I could sit down with you and...
Yeah, we can go through this.
Take a look at it. Okay. Very good. That's it. That's the question I had, so if anybody...
Okay. I'll...
Go ahead, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we adopt Resolution Number 2012...
Forty-two.
Forty, dash forty-two. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing additional payment to Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $537,660, if only. Second.
And I'm sorry, well, I'll ask Jeff tomorrow. I've got a question about how much of this was professional services. I think I understand, but I don't understand from looking through the material. So, and given all the questions I have, I'm going to not vote on this item. It's not necessary, if it's going the way I think it'll go.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
And Olbstein. Next item is M, is that right?
L.
L, I'm sorry. Yeah. I guess we can just go ahead and take that item because I think I got my questions answered when we were looking at the other positions. I did just one question. This is giving us a certain base salary. Will the 2% apply to this position? Hasn't even, we're just creating it now?
The 2% has been factored into that.
So this one's already bumped up?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's included in the management and management salary benefit resolution in the back, in the salary table.
Okay. Because, well, see, the other, when I compared the, I lost my place here. When I looked at the chart you provided for the other positions, those are not bumped up. Those must be the old rates because I was looking at some of the different figures and they're lower.
The appendix A at the back of the management salary benefit resolution includes the 2% increase, and it also includes the principal planner position.
I'm sorry. I'll try to hold this up. Maybe you can see it. What I'm looking at is this chart right here.
Is that the appendix A that says effective July 2, 2012?
Effective October 24, 2011, through June 30, 2012.
There should be a table that says effective July 2, 2012 in your packet.
Really?
If it's been omitted, we can definitely get you a copy.
I don't have it. I don't have it either.
Right.
Oh, it's in the staff report, the management staff report that we just discussed a few moments ago.
Oh, you mean like item 10, something?
Item 10B, I'm sorry.
It is? I didn't, okay. I didn't see it in there either, but...
So you're right. This is the old. This is not include the...
So what we're looking at here in item L is going to be bumped up 2% across...
It has been in item 10B.
Right. But we're approving item 7L, so we wanted to make sure.
No, this is not planning manager. That's the whole point. This is, this is planning. Principal Planner.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. Yeah, so it's...
Because of the way it was listed on the agenda, we had the earlier chart, and then in the end, we have the updated chart.
Okay. All right. Answers my question. I will stay consistent. Any, just further discussion on this item or any discussion on this item, or somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the classification specification of principal planner and adopt the Resolution Number 2012-...
Forty-three.
Forty-three, amending the management group's salary schedule.
Discussion? Now, other than the questions I had, I'm also troubled by this because, you know, we're a fairly flat organization in terms of depth from department head down to, you know, the last employee. And I would have liked to have seen a little bit more discussion about this, the need for it, in the department. I know we've got, you know, for instance, and I could be totally wrong, but we haven't any discussion on it. I look at Mr. Suwicky and his position with the elimination of the RDA and taking care of housing and so forth, and some of the other things, the other positions we have. And I'm just, I just don't know the need for a, I can, let me say this. I can appreciate going down from a manager to a principal planner, but I still see pretty top-level person who has, when I read the definition of what this person's supposed to do, and so they have oversight over other people and that kind of thing. And plus, at least from, again, my perspective of dealing with staff sometimes, we've got two people who, you know, work the counter and so forth, seem very able-bodied people who know their job. I just, I'm not convinced we need this level of a person, even though we've stepped it down.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we talked about this in the budget workshop.
Did we?
We had a budget study session, and we talked about these planning positions.
I think you're thinking about a different, there was a different type of planning position that was talked about.
I know it was a planning position.
This is really in response to the study that we did on both public works and community development in terms of how we might streamline the organization. So, this action tonight creates a position description and a salary for it. It doesn't add a position to the budget or change the budget in any way, but our planning managers retiring this year, and the thought is rather than to fill the position with a planning manager-level position, to fill it with a principal planner slightly lower based on the study that was done and the recommendation of the Department Director, Al Suvay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Entertain a motion, then?
We already have a motion.
Oh, we do have a motion. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It's getting late. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
No. And item O, this is going to be Bob's favorite right here.
Can I answer your question?
So, the question I have on this item is, it looks to me like with the agreement, the new agreement, we're getting bumped up from 14.91 to 15.14, and that, I tried to do the math on it, it looks like about on the full 390 million project cost, it adds just under $1 million to us. And I was curious, what does that do? You know, we've already increased the rate 7% for ratepayers. So for that extra million, what percentage point should, you know, it says we're going to have to raise it again, and so we already know we're going to raise it again, and if we hadn't agreed to this, what percentage savings would we have not had to pass on to our ratepayers? Does it, I know it's getting late, maybe I'm not being clear.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. I think your question's clear, but I think the answer is not readily in front of us. At the point in time when we get from SBSA what those costs are going to be that have to be shared, then we're going to need to do a rate study, which will tell us then what we need to have as the increase in our rates to be able to afford that. So I'm not sure that there's a definite answer to your question right now.
That's what I was afraid of.
As I understand, that technical advisory committee that went through and studied the various alternatives for cost sharing did quite a bit of work to determine what would be the, say, the most fair, equitable distribution of the costs across the agencies, and landing on that one that was higher than what the current share is, was probably not an easy thing for our representative to recommend approval of. But going forward, it seems that that's the approach that the group of agencies in the joint powers agreement need to be sure that they're sharing these costs fairly, so.
And just one other question to add color to the story, I guess, for me, is, was this brought up by a couple of other agencies, or was it brought up by the executive director? Why did we decide to go and review our representation?
Because of the amount of the money that's being spent, which is close to $400 million, required that we go over, literally, as Mr. Walter said, all these items, and also there's the force main, I guess, is the biggest one. I think it's like $48 million, I think, or something like that. And everybody felt that we should identify. In other words, when you have a regular plant going along and you have an agreement, it just keeps going like this. Well, now, we're creating a whole new situation, so everyone wanted to look and say, "Well, 21 or 30 years ago when we had this JP, Joint Powers Agreement, it was, it looked like this. What does it look like today?"
Right.
And that's what I think the technical committee did and spent an awful lot of time trying to figure out. There were options that the commission got that were in different places also. And so that's, to be, in a short answer, that's basically what we did. Looked at it in 2012 as opposed to 1979 or '78.
Well, then, I'm going to say this. I, you know, I've been through this with Mr. Grisilli before, this kind of thing, when we were doing Belmont-San Carlos Fire. It obviously could have been worse. We could have been at 19%. So I have to commend Mr. Grisilli on doing it.
Don't commend me. Commend the technical committee and all the people who did all the work.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But you were there and you represent us.
Yeah, I voted for that.
And you voted for it, so I think they did a fair job. I don't like the fact that we're paying almost $900,000 more, but given what it could have been, I think it's pretty, yeah, I think it's pretty fair and equitable, so. But I did have those questions, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you may just follow on that comment. The discussion I've started having with Mr. Malpe, based on the analysis that's in here, is actually kind of interesting if you compare Belmont and San Carlos in terms of utilization of the system in the various categories. And some of the preliminary information that I got back was that, you know, for example, Belmont's had some very aggressive, I think it was, you said, low-flush toilet ordinances and whatnot. The point being that, while it would obviously have to be changed at some point, and there would be resistance to that, there may be things that we might be able to do that would lower our utilization of the system.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Entertain a motion then on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve or adopt Resolution Number 2012-45, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving supplemental agreement six of Joint Exercise of Power Agreement, South Bayside System Authority, parentheses, SBSA.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. And we stand adjourned until our retreat. Thank you. We didn't have to extend the meeting, we didn't know.